All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. This meeting is being on cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hoffman, if you'd read our community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? All right. Seeing none, just a couple of quick notes before we start. I know the agenda says discussion and possible vote, but I don't anticipate any votes being taken tonight. I think tonight is really for the board to hear all the proposals and then have a little time to weigh them and come back at a future meeting and make some decisions on the proposals. Secondly, before we get started, Mr. Fantasy, I know the numbers have changed a couple of times, so could you just go over for the board the most recent numbers we have from Plymouth County?
Okay, and if I may, I'm just going to give a brief update on how we got here.
Absolutely.
So the ARPA Fund Advisory Committee was established by the voter of the Select Board on September 6th, 2022. It's set out to gather information from committee members, from town officials and employees, and the public. Before the board is documentation of those projects that fit within the confines of ARPA, Americans, well, ARPA, their rules and regulations. Not all projects are submitted to the Select Board, only those that would qualify today. As to the ARPA funding available, the Town of Carver has received $1,129,051.24 directly from the state, and that's available right now.
That's in our, in our Carver account right now, right?
Correct. Also, we have, Plymouth County holds an additional allotment of $2,114,308.49, which can be accessed through the town's application on projects. And additionally, the North Carver Water District will return to the town at the annual town meeting a total of $208,706.95, which the town used ARPA funds through the county for the earlier purchase of the North Carver Water District Treatment Plant for the membrane filters and other equipment.
Okay.
The funds have to be used by 12/31/24. However, if a project takes longer to complete and it's in the process of being done, there's an additional two years available. And that's more for big projects like a new water treatment plant or something like that. I can see we'll get through this. So that's where we stand. A total of, I'll give you the final total, $3,452,66.68.
And just a couple of questions. So the $2 million, over $2 million that Plymouth County has, lack of a better term, assigned to the Town of Carver, are we guaranteed that money? Or is that money that we have to apply for and they can choose whether they want to award us that money or not?
We're not guaranteed it. That's how much we have in there allotted to us, and it's based on what applications we make to the Plymouth County, much like we made that application for the membranes to Plymouth County to get that money so that we can buy those membranes.
But there's no guarantee that we get that money from Plymouth County? That's just the money that's sort of put in our...
No, not if we don't, right, not if we don't apply those applicable projects and purchases that would fall within the categories that ARPA sets up.
Well, I guess my question is, so if we send them a project that qualifies, it's under the ARPA guidelines, it qualifies, have they guaranteed to Carver that we will get that money as long as we use it for, so as long as we give them our ARPA-qualified project, we get that money?
Correct.
There's no question about that. Okay. All right. And I guess my other question, when you mentioned the 12/31/24 deadline, is that a deadline for us to vote a project and get it underway? Or is that a deadline for the project to be completed?
To be completed by that date unless it's already in the stage of being done, being worked on. So if, for instance, in November of 2024, a project's approved and the shovels go in the ground, but it bleeds over into March or April or May of the following year, it's still okay. So there's a two-year window beyond the cutoff deadline. But anything not applied for by that date is cut off.
So just for clarity for the board, if the board didn't feel, for whatever reason, that they felt comfortable with all the projects presented to them and there was money left over, say, in July of 2020, there's no reason they couldn't wait till July of 2024 to approve a project?
Correct.
As long as that project, construction was started?
Correct.
Before 12/31? Okay. Are there any other questions from the board about those guidelines?
I want one question, just to confirm that 2.1 million. So if we submit approved projects, we will get the full 2.1 million?
Yes.
Okay.
If they're approved by the county.
Right. So it's not, it's not like they can...
Subject to their approval.
Right, but it has to follow all the guidelines, correct?
Correct.
So as long as all the projects...
And, and we had a...
I guess I'm trying to get, they can't just all of a sudden change their mind and lower that 2.1?
No, no, that's...
Because that's been allocated for us.
Yeah, that was my concern as well.
Yeah.
That money gets reallocated.
Yep. And just to let everybody know too, that we had a pre-meeting with Tom O'Brien and Matt Hanley and Jared from the Commissioners, and they, we met both Sue Mokwen and Elaine and myself, met with them to go over these projects that we have on the table, and they said that they would all basically qualify.
Okay. With the exception of the pickleball proposal?
That's not on, you won't see that pickleball on here because that would not qualify, unfortunately. I thought it was a good project. They did a lot getting the information, but unfortunately, it doesn't fall within those categories.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the board? All right. Moving along. So the first proposal we're going to hear about this evening is affordable housing through Habitat for Humanity. If you'd like to step up, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me? My name is Amy Bellmore. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth, and thank you for having us back. And I know we've spoken before, but wanted to go through this, obviously, this very specific proposal that we've put in front of you. Can I just ask before I get started, is there a time limit for each presenter tonight? I just want to be mindful of your time.
No, there's no definite time period. We would just ask you to, you know, be as, move through as quickly as possible, that's all.
All right. So just to sort of remind you, Habitat for Humanity has been in operation for 25 years. We've been here, based headquartered in Carver throughout our history. We've moved a couple of times, but we've been headquartered in Carver throughout our history. We serve six towns. In addition to Carver, we also serve Plymouth, Kingston, Middleborough, Lakeville, and Plimpton. And, you know, we are purely dedicated on building and repairing and providing affordable home opportunities to low and moderate income families. And so our proposal to you tonight is, in the areas, as Bob mentioned, there are, and as you know, there are different categories that projects become eligible, and affordable housing fits within the equity-focused services bucket of ARPA funding, meaning that that was meant to help the hardest-hit communities, hardest-hit by the pandemic, and of course, low-income and vulnerable populations are among that group. So what we prepared for you tonight is a proposal that is requesting $405,000 that would support three home builds here in Carver. And these would be new homes. We also offer critical repair programs where we're working on existing homes where families are living within, and we're helping with weatherization and issues related to health and safety, to keep people in their homes and to age in place and things like that. But this proposal is based on new construction where we would be following the Habitat model. Families within Habitat, families go through a selection process. It's application-based. Of course, they have to be income-qualified, and we also look for families specifically who, they become eligible if they, in addition to being income-qualified, at the level of 30% to 60% of area median income, that's the population that we serve. We also are looking at their current living conditions. So if they are living in substandard housing, it's unsafe, it's overcrowded, or their housing costs are more than 50% of their income. That's what makes them eligible for Habitat consideration. Habitat Homes are also not gifted, important myth that sometimes is out there. These folks become affordable homeowners. They pay a mortgage at an affordable rate that is deed-restricted. The homes that we build will be affordable in perpetuity. There's no flipping and profiting from them. And Habitat homeowners are also expected to put in sweat equity hours, 250 hours of sweat equity, we call it, which means they're helping to build their own homes alongside our volunteers. The one thing about Habitat that is very unique and we're proud of, of course, and it's well-known throughout the country, is that our labor pool is based in volunteerism. We have people of all different backgrounds who are out there doing all manner of construction, of course, under the guidance and instruction of qualified supervisors, construction supervisors. But because of that, our labor costs are, you know, incredibly low compared to a for-profit developer. So Habitat Homes were able to deliver at 50% to 60% of cost compared to a for-profit developer. So you get more bang for your buck when you're working with Habitat, and it's because of all those dedicated volunteer hours. So in terms of the specific three homes that we are, you know, that we are looking at, we identified a handful of properties, but we aren't necessarily wed to those properties right, you know, right at this moment. I can tell you what they are, the addresses, but some of them we do have questions on related to, you know, if the town has feedback about the size of the lots. There was one particular property that we just had a question about ownership status.
So if I could just interrupt you just for one second to let the board know, so these three, these properties are all in your Habitat proposal here, I think the last, the last three pages, just so you can find them quickly.
Awesome.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure the board knew about that.
Yes, absolutely. So bottom line is, so those three properties, and I guess maybe I can come back to them as we get into maybe a question and answer, but, you know, one is, it's Zero Roberts Way and One Roberts Way, which would need to be combined to make up one buildable lot. So that was a question, if that was something that was an opportunity. 149 Main Street was about roughly a quarter acre lot, so that would be, require a variance. There was one address on Great Meadow Road that we just had a question about the ownership status. Obviously, these are all in tax title. We're thankful to you for providing the list of tax title properties, and that's what we're working from. And we looked at, as we always do, we're looking at conditions and wetlands and, you know, what's really going to be buildable and grade and that kind of thing. And then the fourth one is, I don't think, I'm not sure if you have the address, the first draft that I had sent around back in December, we didn't have the number, but it's 157 Plymouth Street, and there's an existing building. It was a feed store, I think it was the most recent iteration, and it's in a mixed zoning residential and commercial area. So those were the specific parcels that we were looking at, but we're also open to discussing others if, I mean, if anybody here or anybody in a different department wants to, you know, encourage us to look at a different property. But in terms of, in terms of how we deliver these affordable homes to our homeowners, they basically will be paying an affordable rate for our standard homes are three-bedroom, two-bath, handicap accessible. We always make our homes, at least one bedroom is on the first floor, so it is an accessible building for whatever homeowner might come into it. And, you know, our mortgage rates are typically less than, well, less than half of what a traditional homeowner may pay for an equal-sized home. So in the packet that I had sent over, there's a breakdown as well that shows what our typical mortgage payments are. For instance, a typical mortgage payment is currently based on DHCD's guidelines for what the selling cost can be, is $566 a month. You add in property tax and insurance, and it comes to just over $1,000 a month. And of course, if you were out there on the, you know, regular market, you'd be looking at probably $3,000 a month once you take into account mortgage, insurance, and taxes. And that's, you know, in today's market that keeps increasing continuously, that's probably even low. So just to go through the numbers a little bit as well, basically, in addition to the $405,000 that we're asking for ARPA, and I just want to make one clarifying point or one comment, you were asking about timing and so forth, and I've had conversations with Treasurer O'Brien as well, just so we had clarity. What we've presented to you tonight is based on these three homes being completed by the end of 2026. So it's taking into account the two years that Bob mentioned. So the funds have to be obligated, all ARPA funds have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024. But then, as Bob said, the projects can be, they have to be completed by the end of 2026. And so just going into this, there's a detailed timeline that shows you our anticipated schedule of activity, but it would require us knowing through, at Springtown meeting vote, there is, all ARPA projects funded through the county allocation have to have an affirmative spring, have to have an affirmative vote at town meeting. That was also advised to me by Treasurer O'Brien. And so in order for us to accomplish three home builds, given the size of our organization, we're a relatively small affiliate of Habitat. If you compared us against Cape Cod, you know, Habitat of Cape Cod, which we're all very friendly and cooperative, and we're all great partners, but they are six times the size of our operation. So in order for us to accomplish this, we feel comfortable and confident in what we've presented, but it would require us knowing this spring that the town was supportive of the project.
Mr. Fantasy, if I could just ask you a quick question on that. So I was under the impression that if ARPA funds are commingled with other town funds, then it requires town meeting approval, but if a project is funded completely with ARPA money, then it doesn't require town meeting approval?
That's correct, and I think she's referencing the transfer of the deeds and the transfer of the property at town meeting.
Okay. Well, there's some other money, some other town money in here too, coming from the community preservation, I think.
But that part is true, that if it's, if it's a standalone ARPA project out of ARPA funds, town meeting's not necessary.
Okay.
But if it's commingled with any other funds from the town, it would be.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, but you're right, where we did, if there is an RFP process, you know, if that is the process, which ain't, you know, anticipated probably would be, then that would have to be underway this spring as well. And if, for whatever reason, that couldn't happen this spring, which we are hopeful it could, then we'd have to look at the number of houses again, right? We'd have to kind of keep adjusting because time is, is an important factor for us in terms of how quickly we can accomplish this.
And again, Mr. Fantasy, we've placed placeholders on town meeting for all ARPA projects that we might choose to move forward, right? Thank you. Okay.
So in the packet that you'll see as well, you can see what the other revenue sources are, which include Habitat in-kind donations and grants. So we are, whenever we're engaged in a project, we're seeking grants from private foundations and, you know, donations and pro bono work from tradesmen and materials and things like that. So we're anticipating combined across the three builds, that would, that total would be $180,000 in addition to our own investment organizationally with time spent, you know, labor services and so forth, not related to construction directionally, but the work all behind it, behind it is a total of $618,000. So from the Habitat side, you're looking at $798,000 across the three homes. And then you're right, we did request funds from CPC. This isn't uncommon. We, it is fairly regular practice for habit, for us to, when we're working with the municipality, to then, if they're, you know, if they have CPC funds available, to ask, knowing that that is a CPC bucket into itself.
Have they voted on that yet? Have you presented to them?
No.
Okay.
Nope. We have not, no. Really, the first stop for this one, for this proposal, was this group here. Yeah. So the total sources of funds as listed there is $1,428,000, and with the total development costs, including hard costs, soft costs, and acquisition, at $1,436 and change, leaving us a little bit of a deficit, just over $8,000, which should be ours to absorb. So that's kind of on the number side of things, and I provided in the email back in December kind of the full pro forma, pro forma for project expenses. If you have any specific questions about, about that breakdown, I'm happy to answer them, but, you know, we try to capture everything that's required for site preparation, pre-development work, engineering, architecture, of course, all the materials involved, and so forth. So that's on the financial side of things. I'm trying to think what else you might want to hear from us at this point. We have done two other full home builds in Carver in the past, as well as many of those critical repair programs that I mentioned. We've certainly done a number of those. And, you know, working with Habitat is such a community experience, and we encourage it, we welcome it, we would love to, you know, go out to the wider Carver community, encourage people to get involved, and that would be a nice way for people to see ARPA funds at work and to hear about it from their neighbors and business community and things like that. It's kind of a, would be a way for it to trickle down the road for folks to be hearing about how these funds are put to use. And, you know, there's just a lot of fellowship that goes along with it, and, you know, we were just very hopeful. Carver is, as you probably know, you know, haven't met the 10% on your goal for affordable housing, the goal that all towns and cities in Massachusetts should have, and I believe you're at about 3.7% compared to the 10%. So, you know, chipping away at that, if we can, if this proposal can help make a bit of a difference there, then we'd love to have the opportunity to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the, from the board?
Yeah, boy. Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know which ARPA category the project falls under? Is it addressing negative economic impacts?
Yeah, so there's one category that's called Equity Focused Services.
Okay.
And it is described as serving the hardest-hit communities and families, and within that there are sub-bullets with addressing health disparities and social determinants of health, investments in housing in neighborhoods, specifically citing affordable housing development within that category. And then the other two sub-bullets within that are addressing educational disparities and promoting healthy childhood environments. So it's under the Equity Focused Services.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of the board?
Sure.
Mr. Carter?
And I apologize, I think I asked this the last time you guys came in, but when, let's just say we build these three homes, and can we, obviously, the homes are in Carver, can we make it specific that Carver residents are the ones that will move into this home? Or could someone from another town that meets your qualifications move into these homes?
So that becomes, when we submit the applications to DHCD, we can submit that there is a request for a local preference, they call it, so that it's not, it wouldn't be a guarantee that, in other words, if we didn't have enough eligible members of the residents from Carver who met all of the different criteria, then it wouldn't preclude other people from surrounding towns from then becoming eligible or from being selected, but it does designate that as a preference. There is sometimes a question about whether you can have, okay, we really want it to be someone from Carver and a veteran. That would be two different preferences, and they won't double up. So you'd have, you know, it would be a, they'll only accept one preference, but it can be submitted that way. I would just say, you know, sometimes you find that the pool is lower than you would think in terms of people who apply and see their way all the way through the process. It's a multi-step process, and that's to ensure that we are making, you know, we're making sure that the people who need this home the most, the families that need the home the most, are those that are going to, you know, benefit from it, be the selected party. And so if there are three homes, I think we just want to have a further conversation about whether all three would want to be submitted with a local preference, because we just wouldn't want to, you know, discourage others.
Okay.
But it's worth, I mean, we can continue that conversation.
True. And then, let's just say, in the end of '26, the three homes are built.
Yes.
People move into them, and all of a sudden, five years, now the market goes crazy, and they decide to sell them. I know the deed restrictions are on them, but you notified, like, they list with the realtor down the street that their home, they might have paid $250,000, far as now worth, on the market for $500,000. Number one, how do you find out about it? Number two, how do you, once it's sold to another person, does it still stay in our account for affordable housing? And what happens to profit? Does that go back into some kind of Habitat fund?
No. Oh, good questions. Make sure I get to all parts of your question, though, it's a lot. So it will stay in your SHI inventory because it is deed-restricted, so it will remain in your inventory in perpetuity.
I'm sorry, what is our SHI?
Yours, so that's subsidized housing inventory?
Thank you.
Sorry, subsidized housing inventory, and that's the number I was mentioning before. The goal across the state is for municipalities to be at 10% of their housing stock is affordable and meeting, and those affordable rates, those criteria and the rates are set by the Department of Housing and Community Development through the state. And so that's the number where you're at 3.7% roughly compared to the 10% goal. And it's, when you, when any community gets to the 10% goal, they can then start saying no to 40Bs, right? So that's the carrot and the stick equation, that a lot of communities would love to be able to say no to 40Bs, but they have to hit that 10% mark first. And you're certainly not alone. Most towns in southeastern Mass are nowhere near 10%. Okay, so that's one question. We, Habitat mortgages, first of all, we stay in touch with our homeowners on a regular basis, right? So it's not like they, we hand over the keys and we don't, you know, interact with them again. So we have a, it's a relationship that we create with these families. And then the mortgages are held through Northeastern Savings Bank, which is through our partnership. And so what we have seen is that they can't take, they wouldn't... they, they wouldn't be able to sell it at retail rates, right? So they, they can take, if they wanted to sell their home, they can um take their equity out, and there is a formula, again, set by DHCD, you know, they can take out a, a little bit of um, well, I guess it's, it's based on equity, but it, it's a set formula of um what they could, what they could sell it for. And um the reality is, we have never had a Habitat homeowner sell their home um in our history, I'm sure it might have happened in other parts of the country or other parts of the state. But when you're talking about being able to pay just over a thousand dollars for a three-bedroom home, you, there's, unless they've won the lottery, they, they can't turn around and buy anything near it in this market that we're in right now. So it, so it just doesn't, it just has never happened in our twenty-five-year history.
I get it, but I'm still confused, meaning.
So they can take their equity out.
I, I, they paid two fifty for it or something, or uh, uh, as they move into two thousand twenty-six, they have a job change five years from now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they have to leave, whatever family reasons.
Yeah.
They put on the house, house on the market, now it's worth six hundred thousand dollars. I get that they're only, but you can't turn around and say it's an affordable house, you can't sell it for six hundred thousand, you have to sell it for four to make it remain affordable?
Yes.
So you do that.
They can't sell it for four, I mean, they can't sell it for six, they cannot.
And they get their equity piece, well, however that calculation works, they're allowed to get some equity out of it based on whatever the current mortgage was, less what they paid, whatever, and maybe a little bit of a bump.
Right.
For having for say X number of years.
Yeah, and it's a formula.
So, so again, when it goes out on MLS or wherever they use, it can't go out at a full market price, it has to go in at a lower, lower market price.
Correct, and there's also, I'd have to talk to um my colleague just to confirm the exact, but um we, I know that we are notified, they're within our kind of um contractual arrangements with the homeowners. Um, they can't sell it blindly without communicating with us, yeah.
Okay, and sorry, last question. Um, of, of the people that you've contacted here, they've already, they, they, you've been engaged with them and they're willing to sell their properties, they're on this list?
These are all in tax title, this is the tax title list that was provided to us.
So, so we know that.
Yep. The only, that was, the only one question was on that one address, I did, it was just, there was something in the notation that we wanted to confirm on the uh Great Meadow Road address, but we can do that separately.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board?
I was just gonna add one thing, so the tax title properties would have to be transferred to the, to the select board at town meeting.
Yes, and, and then there'll be an RFP that we go out to sell on, so.
Right.
Right.
So I guess that's one of the questions I had as well, how would you, I noticed you have down here um seventy-five thousand dollars is the total cost for property acquisition.
Yeah.
But the value of all these properties, most of them are substantially more than twenty-five thousand dollars a property. One of them is, is very close, but most of them are, are substantially more, so you're looking to do, acquire them through an RFP?
Yeah. And that's approximately the highest that we'll be able to go. I mean, the, the reality is we're looking for a partnership with, with the town of Carver. We can never buy property at, you know, retail rate, it's just not a possibility for us.
That's fine, I just want to make it clear that that's sort of another investment on the town's part is, is the property as well.
Yeah, I, I'm assuming that, that if Habitat did it, you would be paying the back taxes that are owed.
Um, that has happened in the past, obviously we, if that is a, you didn't see that in our pro forma, right? So if that totals up to be something that is, we'll have to discuss that, you know, we'll have to look at, that would be a good thing for us to have before we make our final ask, before we narrow down this, is what are their back taxes, if we can get that information from you, Bob, or, or someone else. That's a good point, Sarah, thank you.
And just a, a question, question on the local preference, and I, I may have asked you this last time I was here too, but it's, it's a difficult thing. Can we put a local preference on every house?
Um, so that's what I was suggesting before, and, and um the answer is, I'm pretty ninety-nine percent certain, yes, we can submit it for a local preference. I just want to, uh, you know, encourage you to, to think that there are, you know, community members in surrounding towns. The, the pool of, so, so it's a multi-step application process, it's first a written application. Um, there's an interview, uh, there's, obviously we're gathering um financial information. Um, there's a site visit to confirm their current um living conditions, when I mentioned substandard and so forth. And so along the way, our experience and the experience of pretty much every affiliate here in, in Massachusetts anyway, is that people will opt out, they just take themselves out of the process. Um, and so, you know, we just wouldn't want, we, we want to make sure that these homes get to the people who need it most, right? So I, I just think it's worth the conversation about whether um all of them should have the local preference, maybe two out of three. I think that's worth a conversation.
If, if you do the houses and you put a local preference on every, or every home, let's just assume you, you do, are there, are there people that come before the local preference? If you, if you have a local preference on the house, do Carver folks always come first? Or there, are there other folks that would come before you get to the local preference?
No, there wouldn't be any other people, other category of people that would come before the local preference. That's where I, I'm not sure the rationale about why DHCD only allows one preference, but maybe that's it, because they don't want to prioritize, you know, which one is more important, but.
And once you have a local preference on a property, if down the road that property turns over for whatever reason, does that local preference stay with the property?
That I don't know, I can't say.
Could, could, could you find that out?
Sure.
For us?
Yep.
And um I, I guess the other question I, the last question I would have for you, does Habitat maintain a, 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 a list of people that are looking for affordable housing? Do you, do you have a list of people right now who would be interested in these homes? Or would you just go through the process once the homes are nearing completion?
Um, so we don't maintain a list, um and uh basically when we open up our application process, that becomes public information, we put it out on um in publicly, when the, you know, when there were newspapers, you'd see it in the newspaper, but now we'll, you know, use different means to communicate that. Um, we, we, you know, we send it out to, um, we'll send it out to veterans agents, we'll send, we'll send it out to PAC TV, we'll, we'll get it out as widely as we can that an application is open. Reason why we don't keep lists is, we don't like to give, it, it is a lengthy process for us to get from, you know, pre-development or even identification of a piece of property, you know, we've been, we've been talking to you for a little bit about this, and we've been talking to the town of Plimpton for a little bit, we've been talking, I mean, we talk to our towns all the time um about, about, you know, the goals and, and the ideas of affordable housing and where to build. And we don't want to keep people hanging, you know, what we tend to do is if people call, what we always do, is if people call us now and say they're looking for an affordable home, they're never saying, I'm looking for an affordable home in Carver or in Kingston or in Plymouth, they just need an affordable home. And so I will direct them to our fellow affiliates, you know, South Shore, you know, or Cape Cod or, or Old Colony, um and encourage them to check their open applications. So once we open, then we start keeping the list. But we don't keep a, you know, a list that could then linger for two or three years.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just have one more, so um does the Department of Housing and Community Development that you keep um citing, do they prefer, uh, or do they sort of frown on this local preference idea?
Uh, my understanding is not, I wouldn't like categorize it as frowning upon it, but I, it's not that they would, I, I don't think they treat the application differently, you know, I don't, when you submit, because we do have to submit the application to DHCD, I don't think it's, you know, treated unfavorably if it has any kind of preference. It's, it's, you know, it's treated the same way. In general, I think, my understanding and what I've heard um anecdotally about meetings and, and conversations with them is, sure, they want it to be a, a wide net, um to make sure that the housing is, is getting to the people who need it most. And the wider the net, the more, the more you can kind of figure that out. But I, I don't, I wouldn't say they frown upon it, and I, I don't believe they treat the application any different.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the board? Everyone good? Mr. Fantasy, Ms. Moakland, do you have anything to add?
No.
All right. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, the only last point that I would, would make is um is that on, in terms of the timeline uh that is detailed in the packet, is that the RFPs, um, you know, in order for this whole schedule to work, we'd be looking for that to happen in the summer. So knowing that, you know, it has to be open for a month, and then there's a review period and, and so forth. And as you can see, I mean, I know you don't, um, you know, you're not in, in our, in our, uh, in our boardrooms and construction rooms and so forth, but this is actually an aggressive timeline for us. It's doable, and it's the reason why we went from, I think when we first talked to you, we talked about four houses, and then time went by, and we pulled it back to three because we want it to be doable. We understand that if the project is not finished, that's a problem. And so we won't commit to something that we can't achieve. But in order to achieve this, that RFP being issued in the summer is going to be important.
All right, we will, we will keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your consideration.
All right, so let's see, the next proposal on our list is, is pickleball, and as we've heard, that is not going to occur this, tonight. So up next is the middle high school renovation of the culinary kitchen and community cafe.
Before that begins, can I just ask, oh, Bob stepped away, I'm just curious why they said pickleball didn't count?
They talked to the state treasurer.
I know, but what did he say, what reasoning did he give?
It doesn't fall under one of these categories.
But how, because it, I saw Plymouth used it for a playground, so I'm just.
When he gets back in between this and the next one, we could, we'll ask him, okay? No, that's, that's fine, I, I honestly don't know his either, so. Good, good evening everybody, thank you for having us.
Hi, thank you.
Taking time uh to listen to our proposal.
Mark.
Sue has something. Sue, Sue has something.
I was in that meeting, and they said it's not that it wouldn't qualify, but it would be on the bottom of, of the list because it's not HVAC, it's not air quality, it's not public safety, it's not uh public health-related. So they, if, they said if we had other projects, they, that we should put those things forward first.
But it's not like disqualified.
Disqualified, but you'd have a very, you, you need a very good explanation as to why you want it to qualify.
Got it.
All right, okay, sorry, Mr. Neve.
Um, thank you for having us here. Um, so I'm Scott Neve, Superintendent of the Carver Public Schools, I'm joined by Ryan Griffin, our business manager. Uh, we're here to tell you a little bit about our proposal to renovate our culinary space at the middle high school. Um, so the Carver Public Schools has an award-winning culinary and hospitality program. Um, we use a curriculum called Pro Start. Uh, Pro Start is an industry-backed culinary arts and restaurant management program. Students graduate from our program ready to join the workforce and make an immediate impact in the food service industry. And really, the goal of our project is to provide our students with industry-standard equipment to learn the skills specific to culinary hospitality sector. A little bit more in terms of background, um, we have an outstanding culinary teacher, Dan Portland, who's here with us this evening. Um, and really, we provide our students with really unbelievable opportunities in, quite honestly, a substandard space. Um, so when you think about the space that we have, you know, the current existing space is, is a converted cla-, it was a, what you would call a home economics classroom. Uh, so originally had, uh, you know, stoves and ovens you'd have in your house. So many of it is, is uh converted standard equipment, uh, that's either residential, electric, home, home equipment that you'd have. We have a few pieces of commercial equipment that's been donated over the years from either local restaurants uh or from other schools that have closed. Um, but ultimately, it really is for what's happening in that program, a sub, a substandard space. And we're looking to improve that space for our students. So in terms of current enrollment, uh, this is a, this is an active vibrant program at the middle high school. Uh, we have a hundred and twenty students uh this year enrolled in some of our culinary programs. Uh, and specifically, we actually have forty students that's in our intro to culinary program. So those will be eighth and ninth graders who are going to be coming up through the years, uh, and hopefully graduating with that Pro Start certification. Uh, so that's the goal, is if students go through that pathway, and it is one of our eight pathways at the middle high school. We have a culinary hospitality pathway, with the goal of having some students go through that pathway and graduate with the industry certificate of Pro Start, which makes them uh ready to go into the industry.
And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Neve, how many students could possibly graduate with that, that Pro Start uh qualification?
Ultimately, all forty students who are currently in the interim program could graduate with that certification. This year, I was actually asked Dan beforehand, I had down there, we're looking at maybe eight to ten this year, uh, in terms of who, who will graduate with that certification. Uh, but really, anybody who starts in Pro Start one, uh, and like I said, this, this year, there's forty students enrolled, any of those students could eventually follow that pathway and graduate through that program.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so really, our vision is, is kind of twofold. Uh, and, and I think, I think most people here know that this is actually a project we've been trying, been pursuing over the last couple of years. Uh, we've been looking to upgrade that space. And being very honest, uh, the numbers of what the cost would be just really were higher than we expected. Uh, so originally, our thought process was through some capital line items, through support of the town, that we'd be able to renovate the space. But then when we really went into it, really started looking at it, as you're going to see, uh, what we're going to talk about here is about a one point one million dollar project. Uh, and so la- as we began to really dig into this last year, uh, we visited some other uh high schools that had a similar type of program. Um, we uh, we engaged a designer, um, we worked with our own staff. So working with Mr. Portland, working with our administration, working with the designer, seeing other programs that are out there in comprehensive high schools that have uh a culinary type of kitchen to help our vision. Uh, we came up with a schematic design uh and a preliminary budget, which is in everybody's background, and we can, I'm not, I wasn't, my goal time was to like go through the budget, but certainly, uh, Ron's here and I'm here to kind of answer any questions people have specifically about the budget overall. Um, but really, what our vision is, is we're looking to create uh two spaces. Uh, one is a cooking space, and then in the future, a, a, a space that would be available to the community and to the public. Um, so, um, you know, ultimately, uh, what we want to do is we want to provide our students with a culinary space uh that matches the incredible work they've been doing, uh, but we recognize it's a, it's an expensive process. So phase one, and what we're really talking about here, so I'm going to talk about both phases. In terms of the ARPA money, we're only looking to fund phase one. We wanted the community, we wanted the board to be aware of what the long-term vision is. And hopefully, we'll be able through some grants, which we'll talk about at the end, or through some other opportunities in the future, do phase two. Uh, but I want to be very clear that in terms of our, what we're asking for in terms of support through ARPA is only for phase one of the project. Uh, and phase one is the kitchen renovation. Um, so the core of the renovation is to update the kitchen area with industry-standard equipment and safety infrastructure. Uh, key equipment updates would include installing gas convection ovens and stove tops, fryers and ranges and griddles, a multi-base sink, uh new prep tables, ice and chiller machines, a slicer. Um, the plan calls for salvaging and reusing existing equipment where feasible. So we'll look at what we have, and obviously if we think it's, if it's good and it's, and we can keep it, we're going to try to keep it. Uh, and then it's also a big pieces is the infrastructure, and the infrastructure's really been the key. Uh, the key renovation for infrastructure includes adding an anse and fire suppression system, uh, a new mechanical, electrical and plumbing system, um, uh fire-resistant ceiling tiles that are acoustic ceilings, um resilient flooring, new doors. Um, and really, it's that anse and fire suppression system, and really, a new, it's a new HVAC system for that building, that, for that, I shouldn't say the building, for that room, for that space within the middle high school, is that's the expense that we ran into that was kind of unanticipated, what the expense was just for that portion of the project. Um, and so, you know, that's our first phase. Um, and we have representations of it up here, I just wanted to have it here, I'm not looking for it. So not gonna, I'm not gonna walk around and turn, you know, so this is actually the real design of what we're talking about in terms of the kitchen phase, and this is a plan and design of, of what we use for uh the public space, the restaurant phase, afterwards is phase two. Uh, these are our existing classrooms, so this is the existing classroom that the culinary classes in now. And then they use this, so they use this as the cooking space, they use this currently as the classroom space. So these two classrooms are already allocated, and these are the classrooms we're looking to renovate for the building.
Mr. Neve, can I ask you, is that the same proposal that's in our packet here?
It is, it's the same proposal to the packet, there's nothing that's different pictures. The pictures here are just representations of some of the materials that we'd be buying. It's not the, it's not the actual design of what our space would look like, so this is the actual design. And that is in everybody's background, you have that material, uh, so, but certainly you can feel free later on to come up and take a look at the, the board if you, if you want to do that. Um, so going on to phase two, and again, just mentioning phase two, I, I know I'm being repetitive. Uh, my wife often criticized me for that, saying I say things multiple times, but sometimes I just want to be really clear, we're not asking for funding for phase two. Uh, but phase two would be a community cafe, uh, that would serve as a functioning retail space for the culinary program. Uh, the space could be used by student, staff and the community uh to purchase items, uh, and kind of a, a ti- a take-in or dine-in space, take-out or dine-in space. Uh, and our culinary program has made a lot of connections with the community, I know they've worked really well, uh, with Shane Ginn's thanks. Uh, there's been some connections with the Council on Aging, and obviously, if we had some. And obviously, if we had some sort of a, uh, we could do that through the kitchen itself, but actually adding the community cafe would certainly allow us to expand the connections that we have within the community of Calver and supporting the whole community. As I said, the community cafe section would be adjacent to the, to our, you know, to where the kitchen would be. So in terms of, uh, the overall project budget, the estimated cost of phase one is one million seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. What we're requesting from Opera is we're existing, we're, we're requesting seven hundred, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The other three hundred and thirty thousand would come from existing capital articles that are already been approved at town meeting. A couple of those were specific to the culinary classroom. A couple of those were specific to modernize our curriculum and supporting our pathways programs. So both of those, all those capital items clearly in my mind support this project because it's, it's about improving our culinary space and supporting the pathways programs at the middle high school. And then our, you know, we do want to make everyone aware that we, we did apply for, uh, grant funding for this through the state. It's called the Skills Capital Grant, and the state's been supporting a lot of projects like this. We were really very hopeful that we would receive a Skills Capital Grant. Unfortunately, we did not. So, and we, all these things were happening simultaneously, so we were having discussions about the Opera money. So we're, we've always just been pursuing avenues in the ways that we could fund this project. So at the same time, we were pursuing this avenue, we were also pursuing the Skills Capital Grant. We found out towards the middle end of December that we did not receive that grant. And, but we were, but we're willing to apply for that grant again. There are several rounds of it. So the next round of Skills Ca- for the Skills Capital Grant, the application is due in March, and we would find out if we were, if the project was funded at the end of May. But what our concern is, is really, this project is ready to go. We're ready to hit the ground. Once this money is approved, we can move forward. And if, if we can move forward as soon as possible, that's going to be a benefit to our students and to the community. And what I hope our goal would be, you know, we didn't have a, we don't have a laid-out timeline here because we're not sure, we're not sure what the timeline of this project's going to be. And Ryan can talk more about the project being ready to go, if people have questions. But, but our goal would be, if this was approved and funded, that we would hopefully have the space up and running in the fall of this year. You know, the ultimate goal would be September first, first day of school. Don't know if we'd meet that goal, but hopefully, definitely in the fall, this space would be here. If, if we, if we waited, if, uh, so I want to address the issue of, because I brought up the Skills Capital Grant. And I could see the board thinking, well, why don't we just wait? Apply for the Skills Capital Grant, see if you get it, and then if you don't get it, come back to us. Our only concern with that approach is, we have no guarantee we're not going to get the Skills Capital Grant. We just went through that process and we didn't get it. And if we took that approach, then we'd take no action on this project, right?
And if I could, if I could just ask perhaps Mr. Fantasy, with this project, if the board approved this, and then ultimately, later on, the school got the, the grant that they're applying for, is there any reason that that money couldn't come back to the town, similar to the way the North Calver Wada District money came back to the, to the town?
You could do a memorandum of, of understanding and have that happen, but it would happen at another town meeting.
Happen at next year's town meeting. Would, there would, there would be no, any issue with that?
No, absolutely not. So that's what I was really, that's what I was going to propose.
Okay.
I'd say that we would, we would be committed to, to apply, even if you agreed to fund this project, we're making the commitment to apply for the Skills Capital Grant because we want to be good partners with the community. And if, and if the state's willing to fund the project, then we'd be willing to enter into an MOA and return the money back to the Opera funds. And you still have a little bit of a timeline there, as we talked about earlier, that you don't have to make decisions on projects until, uh, the end of 2024. So we're, we're certainly willing to do that. But I guess I just want to address the concern, which makes sense to me for you to say, well, why don't we just wait? And in my, our mind, just waiting pushes the project back another year. So this is a project that we have been pursuing, as I said, for many years. And if, and if, and we think this is an outstanding opportunity to move that project forward. And if that opportunity is there, we'd hate to, uh, take another year delay in terms of meeting that promise that we've been, well, I, promise is the wrong term, meeting that, uh, goal of ours of really providing the students an appropriate, uh, space for our culinary program.
Can I ask you, do you have a number for phase two?
We do. I don't know if you want to talk about the phase two number.
Yeah, sure. So you have in your background as well for phase two. But if you just take a look at your second page in your schematic design budget, you see phase two at five fifty-two, four fifty-six. I want to be transparent with you and say that that is an older number. So I'll give you just a minute on this and tell me if it's too much information. We started this project a year ago, had schematic and budget design done. We went through this grant process, as I'm sure you're aware, I can't put an RFQ out to bid with design that's going to be older than a year. So I had the designers refresh pro bono to do just phase one, knowing that we had to reduce our scale, now not getting the grant. The point being, your phase two cafe dollar amount is now a year old, and given that you've got inflation at whatever the number is right now, if we were to go and get the grant, for example, for phase two, we'd want to have a design firm come in, have their estimators re-estimate phase two based on whatever the most recent estimation is for materials, time, et cetera.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, ultimately, renovating the culinary space, as I said, has been a priority for us for a long time. And we're hoping that this is something that the board will take into consideration, and we look for your support. And at this time, we'll take any questions you have about the project.
Any questions from the board?
What question? What do you think the expected life of the school is left? How many years until you expect the middle high school to need a massive renovation or replacement?
So are you, are you making a proposal to move for a new middle high school?
We're investing.
So I, 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 you know, so my response to that question is generally, and, um, Mr. Fantasy, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, on my timeline. But yeah, I think the new elementary school opened in 2018. So we still have fifteen years, the community still has fifteen years left on that bond, around there. And in my mind, it would make sense that the community's probably not going to be looking to rebuild or build a new middle high school until the bond is paid on the elementary school. That's my calculus. And obviously, if the community had a different appetite, I'd be certainly willing to support that and move forward on a project. But that's, I think, the thinking. So I, I think realistically, you know, maybe ten years out, that we'll start looking at that process with the goal of maybe looking to do a new middle high school in the fifteen to twenty-year mark. And the other piece that we should, uh, make note of is that when we built the new elementary school, if you remember, we also did what was called an accelerated repair project at the middle high school. And we replaced the doors, windows, uh, and boilers, uh, in that, in the roof of that building. And as part of the accelerated repair project, you actually make a promise to not put forward an MSB, MSBA project for twenty years, that it wouldn't, that the funding source was not set for twenty years. And if you, if the, if we move forward before twenty years, then the money that was spent on the accelerated repair project would come off the top. That would be one hundred percent the cost of the community of Calver. So I think, I think honestly, realistically, it's going to be fifteen years before we begin that process, and it might be fifteen to twenty years before there's a new building. And I think at that time, it would really be appropriate to do that. So, uh, I, I could understand the concern, and we've been thoughtful about this. In my mind, there's some spaces in that building that really need to be redone. I know we're getting, I don't want to get off topic, but it's, I think it's supporting a point, is that, you know, the locker room spaces are not great. The auditorium could really, we're doing some work in the auditorium, but the auditorium could really use some, be, to be redone. And those projects are probably multimillion-dollar projects. And we're, we're thinking that calculus of, when, when are we, how, how much does the town want to invest in a building that we, I think reasonably are thinking we're going to replace in fifteen to twenty years? The way I, the reason why I view the culinary project a little differently, and a lot of projects. So we've, we've come forward to the town to support like renovating some of the furniture and that type of stuff, which the town has supported over the last couple of years. And we've done some nice upgrades in the building that way. Because the reality is, if it's fifteen years, that's a generation of students. You know, that means your kindergarten students right now are going to graduate from the current building. And so I think we have to think about that generation as we consider, uh, our expenditures and the types of, uh, programs we're doing. And I think this would be a great investment in those kids. Now, the next part of that is, um, I, I would not claim to be an expert on what the lifespan of some of these products are. But certainly, you know, if the time, the time we go to build, uh, a new middle high school, anything that was appropriate to bring over from what the investment the town made in this project, we would certainly take a look at that. As I said, some of the things that's in our space now came from, uh, I believe from the north, I'm looking at Dan, from the south. So it came from from the south when they built the new from the south. And we went in and they, they actually donated some of their kitchen equipment. You know, so it is serviceable. So anything that was serviceable that we purchased now, when we build this new building, uh, which, I'm just excited about that concept, eventually is left to have a building, a new building, that when that happens, we would certainly look to use anything that was reusable.
Anything else?
Sorry, I'll log in to a little bit.
Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything?
Nope.
Ms. Baldwin? Anything you'd like to add?
We got a couple. Just looking at the, again, sorry, the overall cost of the one point one million, one million seventy-four thousand, you're saying the seven forty-five coming from Opera? And the other two thirty are, is, will be coming from other articles at past town meetings?
Yeah, three thirty, I believe.
Three thirty?
Yeah.
Is that, is that from the two thousand twenty-two town meeting?
It's two thousand, uh.
No, go ahead. No, I, certainly, you can.
The, the town, and just to underscore it, Mr. Neef, it said, the town began this process back in two thousand twenty-one with an expectation this was going to be a very light project. And so two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, you passed culinary classroom upgrade articles for fifty thousand, a hundred thousand. And then you also have curriculum modernization, which is that pathway, those pathway articles. All in, that's three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars of articles that could be dedicated to a project like this.
So where is that money sitting now?
It's an article, so it remains until spent.
Okay, so we have it in our cash reserves. When it gets spent.
It's not a cash reserve, it's an article, but yes, it can be.
It has to be spent sooner or later, so money has to come from somewhere.
Right.
So where's the money sitting now? I know it's in an article. Was it sitting in some kind of revolving account?
It's just in our bank account.
So it's in our bank?
It's, it's available.
Great. Skills grant, you didn't get the skills grant for the one million dollars. So, so what makes you think that, wh- wh- why didn't we get it, I guess? And what makes you think we're, we have a shot at some second, third attempts?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start if you don't mind.
Sure.
Yeah, so I spoke, I spoke with the rep about that exactly, and he said, you know, why didn't we get it this time around? He said, one of the reasons is timing. So that particular grant for that round had to be spent and completed by the end of June. And so to do this kind of a project and have all of your product available, especially some of the product that has to be sent out for HVAC, ancil, NP, those sorts of things, didn't seem realistic for their timeframe. It doesn't mean that we can't get this next grant, and we're going to make a good effort to do it. And this next grant comes out, uh, this past week and is due in March. And so we'll put our application forward. We actually have a meeting that we set up with the coordinator to talk about our application, and he gives us coaching advice about like, hey, you could do X, Y and Z on your application to improve it and strengthen it against the rubric, et cetera, et cetera.
And is this, um, second grant, million dollars, half a million dollars, they give you a range?
They haven't given us a range yet. We would apply for the entire amount, that we'd apply for both phases, phase one and phase two. And it would be at their leisure as to how much or little, so proportional, the entire thing, so proportion thereof, based on the group.
Yeah, I don't know the total amount available at the state level for skills capital grants. This, I know the last round of awards, where some projects is low as a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars, but some projects is much as, close to ten million dollars. So I don't know what's total available in their funding. Like, they don't establish a parameter of, we will only accept projects of two million dollars or less. They want you to put your project forward, and then they make a determination based on their funds available on which projects they're going to support.
Great. And I think you said this in your report, just want to make sure everyone knows that if you get the seven forty-five from Opera, you'll take the one eighty-five off capital outlay requests?
Yes, correct.
Anything else?
I think that's all I got. Yeah, thank you.
So I have a quick question. So if, if you were to get the grant that's due in March, when, when does that, when does the project have to be finished for that particular round?
I don't know that yet.
Because if, if you were hoping to get the grant in January, but it has to be finished in June?
It, it would be unrealistic to be June, it would likely be that five, that, that full calendar year. But I don't have the exact detail yet.
And is it realistic that that could be finished in that?
In that calendar year, yes. Ideally, if this board were to approve the Opera funding, our goal would be to finish this project over the summer. While we don't have students in there and the contractors get in and out, you know, during regular hours and not have to have additional cost on, you know, outside of workouts.
Anything else from the board? Uh, Mr. Fantasy, if I could just so, if the, if the board was to approve this, this would not require town meeting approval, correct?
Uh, it, it would because, oh. Yeah, but they're coming away yet. It hasn't been identified for that yet. We'll, we'll have to check in.
Okay, all right, yeah, all right. All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up this evening is, uh, let's see, uh, public safety departments. First is EMS. We have, uh, upgrade an alarm, HVAC, security systems, dispatch software, and broadband access, and the purchase of cardiac monitors. Evening, chief. Thanks for joining us.
All right. So yeah, I think that, that list sounds pretty right. I have, um, I put mine in order of priority, so that's what I want to discuss tonight, is the priority of where these, um, the funds is listed on the, uh, that was provided goes for. The first one is the pri- number one priority that I have for EMS would be the purchasing and equipping of two cardiac monitors for the department. Currently, the cardiac monitors we have are reaching their end of life. They are scheduled on my FY twenty-six capital plan. And they've gone up increasingly in cost as to what was originally planned. Currently, the, uh, cost, uh, the most recent quote I got from our vendor yesterday was to replace the two cardiac monitors would cost us roughly ninety-two thousand dollars. So it's a little bit less than what it originally was, um, put in for, for the Opera funds. That's with us trading in one of our cardiac monitors we currently have, along with another monitor that we use for training purposes only. It's not allowed to be used on patients because it's old, but we can use it for training. And it also allows us to keep a, a third monitor as a spare unit for the town. So if for some reason, uh, one of the monitors broke, we'd have a spare unit we could take and put on the truck. So to keep the trucks in service. So again, this was originally projected to be taking a, an FY twenty-six out of the ambulance reserve fund for purchasing to replace these, uh, units. So this would be, if, if we can use Opera funds for this, it's another way to save money out of the ambulance reserve fund so that we can keep that fund healthy, uh, moving forward.
All right, and what's the number?
It's ninety-two thousand, it's roughly ninety-one and change, but, um, I had to double-check because there might be some other accessories we may need to, to purchase with the units. But no more than ninety-two thousand dollars, the most.
All right.
The other, the other, uh, thing, the next one up there, um, which is actually, I think it's on Chief Doofly's list, is the, um, upgrading of the dispatch software. So we, um, we upgraded our ambulance reporting software as of July first. We went to a web-based service. It makes for our documentation a lot easier. We can share it with the hospital a lot easier than in the past. Our medical director can actually log in and see reports, uh, when, when he needs to, because he has to be able to review our reports for quality assurance. And one of the things that came with was computer automated dispatch, um, information. So when the dispatcher puts in the information for the call, we can pull that information from the dispatch center right into our report. And currently, we can't do that because the software we're using is older, and the cost to do it is almost twenty-five thousand dollars. So it was in the software we pay is three thousand dollars. So it wasn't really worth the cost to invest to do the CAD interface. So that's on the net, if we can look to upgrade the dispatch software, that would benefit our department as well because we'll be able to set up that CAD interface, which would make sure that all the demographics for the patient, times, run number, everything can get pulled right into the report and make it a lot easier for everyone to do their jobs as far as for documentation purposes.
All right, and do you have a number for that?
From what, uh, Chief Doofly provided, it was two hundred and forty-six thousand, it's actually. But I also, with that, with that, that is, that is just using one vendor, and I'm not going to, I don't know too much about the dispatch stuff, so we can Chief Doofly talk about it. But we also, that, that's using one vendor. We, we do need to do some more research into it to see what other vendors have out there for us to use. And I think we need to. Um, and I think we need to look at that so that we can try to get all public safety on the same, if possible. Um, and work together. We haven't really done a lot of research on that yet.
I think you need to get back to us with the numbers as quickly as possible, so we can, when we meet to discuss the expenditures, so we can try to coordinate.
Exactly.
I think it says two hundred and forty six thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and that's, that's for one vendor that is kind of an extension of what we're using. It's a, the same vendor, just a new software.
Okay.
So, um, again, to piggyback off something, the other thing I think is a priority for, for that assist, our department is not necessarily from EMS, is the public safety radio infrastructure that, again, I'll let Chief Weston talk about when he comes up, because it's underneath his, but uh, that's something that I support a lot for our department because it does benefit our radio communication in the south side of town. Um, it has the potential to help our radio infrastructure, which is something we've been working on with new radios, new dispatch radios, new, new equipment. So that's just another piece of the puzzle that can help us. As far as the remaining EMS station upgrades, the building we have is pretty old, as we've discussed in the past. It does need some upgrades. Uh, the first one, of course, would be the HVAC. So the building is actually two sections. One's newer, and the one is the original section. The newer station, newer section of the building, uh, the heating and ventilation was actually upgraded with air conditioning two summers ago. Um, and that has helped out because now we're not using a bunch of window units. Um, but when we look to do that, the furnace in the initial, original station could not be upgraded because it was so old. So we're looking to upgrade that furnace so that A, it's, you know, working better, more efficient, but also so that we can also include air conditioning into that section of the building, uh, which is where the showers are, um, storage is, uh, the kitchen is, as well as the two administrative offices. Right now, we use window units. We have one unit mounted in the back wall, and then there's a window unit for my office. Um, and it's just not cost effective to use window units when you can use an actual HVAC system. So and the cost that I got from O N M to do that was listed at about twenty five thousand dollars to do that upgrade. So there was, that's for the heating and ventilation and AC just for the one half of the building. Because the other half is up to speed and has been upgraded on the last, I say, two summers ago, that came out of the ambulance reserve fund. Um, the other upgrade is EMS security systems. Um, we're looking to enhance our security. Our station, of course, is not monitored by any cameras. Um, there's times when the station is empty, um, and there's an ambulance left in the station. Want to make sure that everything is protected. Uh, so what we're looking to do is purchase some cameras so that we can monitor the outside of the building, uh, the three sides. So we can see the entry doors and plus the windows in the back where the bedrooms are. Uh, and several cameras inside the station, uh, not in the staff area, but in the more of the administrative area. So something that would be outside, um, buying in a deputy's office, something that would be down the hallway that sees the storage closet, uh, where we do keep medication, we don't keep any narcotics, but we do keep medications and a lot of expensive equipment in there. And also the ambulances themselves, um, so that we keep an eye on if the station's empty. And for some reason, you know, something goes missing, we will check the cameras to see if someone came in and removed something that they shouldn't have.
So these cameras wouldn't be actively monitored? They'd be something, if there was a problem, you'd go back and.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if they were most likely with the system, you'd be able to actively look at them, and there's a possibility we could even have it over in dispatch so they could see it live. Um, but it would be more useful for checking back to see if there's an incident going on. So, and, or checking back the tapes to see what, what may have absolutely occurred. Um, if something goes missing, something gets damaged, um, that's more of the security. And the other security part of that is going away from, currently, we, we have a punch code for a lock. You know, we definitely want to switch to something that's more secure, uh, with like, like access cards similar to what Town Hall has. Um, so that staff can swipe a card to get in, so you need a card to get in the building. Um, that, that is helpful for transition, any changeover with staff. You know, when people leave, you don't really want to have to change your code every time. So having a swipe access card makes that a lot easier because you can just deactivate that card. And you don't worry about that person having to have access to the building anymore. And then the last thing for upgrades was currently our fire alarm system. Um, we do actually do have hardwired smoke detectors. We thought, I thought they were battery. Uh, Dave came over and checked with me today. We do have pull stations, but it's not monitored. So if they pull the pull station, it just activates a local alarm in the building. Uh, but it doesn't go outside of the station, so it still relies on someone calling nine one one to get the fire department to respond over. Our carbon oxides are not on that system. They're battery powered, uh, which is for the same reason. So I would urge that we look to upgrade the fire alarm system in that building. Um, the upgrade, I'm sorry, the security upgrade was forty thousand, and Dave's still looking to get numbers for the upgrade in the alarm system. Uh, but I think that's something beneficial. Yes, we are staffed twenty four hours a day, but there are nights when the crews leave the station, the station is unmanned. Um, and it's also times when people are sleeping. And for me, having a monitored CO monitoring system to alert if there's high CO levels in the building while people are sleeping and may not, you know, have issues, we could, especially we do have ambulances, vehicles, and, you know, other stuff that runs along with the furnace.
Alright, so are there questions from the board on any of those items?
Um, what was the price for the fire alarm?
That, we, uh, just started looking at that this week, so we're gonna get some numbers as soon as we have those, we'll get them back to you.
Yeah, you could just get them as quickly as possible for us. Any, anything else from the board?
Mr. Carter?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One would be on the, obviously the biggest item, the two forty six for the dispatch software. Um, you've talked to one vendor so far?
So, we, so we got the quote from the vendor who is, has the software we're using now. And this is the new software that they're using. So that's the only number we have. We haven't, like I said, we do have to do some research into it and reach out to other vendors and see what else is out there that would work for us.
Yeah, is there, my crazy question, but is there like a link that, that we could look and just see a demo of it from the vendor, any, any vendor that you're thinking about using?
Yeah, sure. I'm sure we definitely look into that.
Just curious. Um, and the other items on, like the upgrade in the security system, HVAC, I noticed it wasn't on capital.
Correct. Yeah, so this, this was not a capital project at any time. Um, it was something that just was, you know, when it came up and it was said that this week could use the funding for it, it came up as, well, it's something that needs to be addressed. Um, I kept that off for a while now because there's been some discussion about what the future is of that building that we're in. And, but if there's, where there's no plans to move us or to do anything, at this time, I think that we need to look to put some money into the building to upgrade this stuff.
Great, thank you.
Alright, anything else from the board?
Well, you just mentioned the unknown timeline for a new building. Do you know what happened to the Town Hall complex that was supposed to be built when, when the fire department moved from station one to there? That building was supposed to go away and maybe you guys would get one? Does anyone know what happened to Town Hall complex and when, when they might be getting something new?
Nope.
No, that idea just went away?
No idea, so.
Cool. Love that. Love when ideas just go away.
Alright, is there anything else? Alright, um, so next up is EMS and police premium pay. So Chief Doofly, if you'd like to come up and join us for this discussion. And, um, Mr. Fantasy, while, while the chief steps up, I'll, I'll ask you, is it possible for the board to, to do just EMS and police premium pay? I was under the impression that the town did premium pay, they had to do it across the board.
So across the board of the whole town?
That's.
Yeah, and, and it starts with the lowest paid employees who worked during the COVID time period.
That's, well, I was under the impression as well. So if, so if the town choose to do, if we chose to do premium pay, it, we could not say EMS and police premium pay, it would have to be.
Be across the board, yeah.
Okay. So with, with that, we'll turn it over.
Well, yeah, so, um, we put that forward because it was, fell underneath the EMS files underneath the essential employee. Um, so we did do some research into that. That was one of the questions that we did have was whether or not Opera funds could be used for premium pay for certain departments or if it had to be townwide. Um, so we know, I know, you know, it would depend on, there's a lot of factors contributing to it. Uh, whether or not, um, the rules align as to whether or not it has to be increased to the hourly rate for people who work during a specific time period, uh, whether it has to be include employees who are no longer with the, with the department, who may have left for whatever reason, or just current employees who worked during that time period. There are a lot of questions that we still were trying to get answers to. Um, you know, I'd done some figures and some rough estimates as to how much it would cost. You know, if, if we did three dollars extra an hour for, you know, all, for the current employees that work for the town who worked during COVID state of emergency, which was March of twenty twenty until October of twenty twenty one. But instead of the, the, uh, the way it was described to us was that it's not the, not able to use Opera funds just for one or two departments. It has to be townwide. So, I know, I know that there are probably some discussions that other towns got premium pay, which they may have, but it did not come from Opera funds, is what Plymouth County told us. And refer to Mr. Fantasy for that.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh, speaking with Tom O'Brien yesterday and, um, and Matt Hanley, that there's no Plymouth County town or city that utilized any Opera funds for premium pay. And he doesn't, he really does not recommend that use for this, this program.
Okay. Chief Doofly, do you have anything to add to this question?
No, this guy's already had, so, no, I'll do a good job. I think there are other towns that did do it, maybe not through Opera funds, but.
Okay. Are there questions from the board on that particular item? Alright. So, seeing none, we'll move on to the emergency management department. Uh, thank you very much, folks. Chief Walsh, welcome. So we have emergency management, modernized with communications upgrades and IT capabilities.
Well, good evening. A little bit of history regarding our E O C, which is in the basement of the Town Hall here. It was designed and outfitted by the Entergy Corporation in the mid nineteen eighties. And, um, the entire emergency management operation was supported by grants and monies from the Entergy Corporation, who was the owner and operator of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station. And efforts over the years to try to get it upgraded, um, were not successful. Um, we were able to get a grant and operate the department by it, but they were not interested in investing in opera, upgrading the E O C, which they didn't see would be upgrades which would assist their particular concern, which was being able to pass biannual FEMA exercises and the like. So we find ourselves now in two thousand and twenty three with a nineteen eighties exercise, um, E O C. And, um, so I think that, um, if there are monies available, and that this, that consideration of whether, of upgrading that, it certainly needs it, both from a technology point of view, infrastructure point of view, I'm not sure. Um, I would have to probably hire a consultant to take a look at this and determine what it would take to do that. Um, it's in the basement of the Town Hall. Um, I don't know, sometimes we have IT issues down there and, and other things, so. Um, but that is why, uh, when asked if I had any Opera suggestions for emergency management, that's what, that's the one I have, and uh, that's why I made it. And, um, if people think it's worthwhile and, um, might make the cut, then we can go forward to um, perhaps try to find out more of the details that would be necessary and what the ultimate expense would be.
Well, I, I, speaking for myself, I think, I think it's important, and I think it's important for us to know, obviously, how much. Um, Mr. Fantasy, is there some way we can work with Chief Walsh to, to help put some numbers to this item?
Yeah, we can. Let's get together, maybe the end of the week.
Okay.
And see what we can come up with.
Are there questions from the board for the chief?
Nope. Proud of.
Alright.
There you go.
Pretty quick. Thank you. Alright. And, uh, let's see. So next we have the fire department.
Sorry, quick.
Yep, sorry.
Sorry, quick question. Uh, this one Tom left.
Well, he's, he's still here. We can.
On the, I'm pretty sure I know these, but on the townwide technology, infrastructure, and equipment item on capital outlay, two hundred and seventy three thousand. That had nothing to do with your, you made no request or allocation into that number.
No, yeah, I have nothing in the capital.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright. Welcome, Chief Weston. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. Um, so before you, I just passed out some of my notes. Um, I'm pretty much reading the same thing you are. I'm not gonna try to read it word for word. But we have, I'm kind of representing the fire department, and then I have a couple of general public safety needs that I just want to talk about. Under the fire department, there are technically four requests that we're looking at, and under public safety needs, there are two. And not to confuse any one, but, but we do have one that we can swap back and forth. It was a discussion on what categories these might fall under. I think they fall under a broad range of categories, and I'll certainly defer to our town administrator and the smarter people across the room. Um, but they're either under broadband infrastructure or negative economics caused by health emergencies and increasing public safety capacity. So there are some areas that these are covered. But again, exactly specific where that is, I mean, I, I think we've got to ask more experts than I am. So uh, the first one on the list is, uh, you might be aware or not aware, there is a, a townwide fiber network um, that is specifically for, um, townwide buildings within our community, uh, that was started and developed about five years ago. The goal of, of the first item would be to increase that fiber optic run to our fire stations two and three, North Cover and South Cover. Currently, that fiber is connected to the school, which is the main hub that monitors the fiber traffic and keeps the servers there. And then there's a line that's run to the fire station, the police station, EMS facility, Town Hall, um, schools, uh, Elkhorn Schools, um, and so forth. But there is no fiber optic or, uh, that capacity either ends up town. So, um, everything I'm going to talk about, I do have, we do have hard quotes on, so these numbers are, um, good numbers. So this would be to increase that fiber network, the long, long runs to those facilities. Um, and that cost is a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars, plus about a fifteen thousand dollar upgrade to the school to increase, and I might use the wrong term, a server device for the fiber optic. Uh, that did come from Steve Mahoney when we had a discussion on, on doing that. This kind of follows a logical order. Um, on item number two, uh, we're looking to add security, access control, and security cameras to both of the stations two and three, North and South Cover. Those facilities do not have any access control or any cameras. Um, what that allows us to do is, the same was, was proposed before, it gives us notifications who's in the buildings, who's out of the buildings. The cameras provide live feeds to our dispatch and ourselves, uh, when a firefighter might be responding, or when a piece of apparatus is actually leaving the building. Um, when it was during COVID, you know, it, it caused disruption among all departments, but certainly among ours, when we had firefighters that were sick, who's responding, who isn't responding. So it adds the same capacity, it would be compatible with the system we have now in our fire headquarters, um, and also similar systems within the town building. So it would, it would be a seamless transition. Combining those two items, when you have a fiber network to these buildings, plus the security access and cameras, gives us now a secure link to these outside facilities. Unfortunately, we concentrate around in the, in the center of town for technology, but we tend to forget about the outlined facilities and municipal buildings. Um, so that creates a secure pathway, files can be transferred back and forth, uh, fiber is very stable um, during winter storms and, you know, and any emergencies that happen. So it's really the logical way to go, and it's a logical way to increase, um, you know, townwide fiber.
Chief, could, could I ask you?
Sure.
Could you give us an example of a, a public safety emergency or something along that line where this would provide an advantage over what we have right now?
Yeah, so right now, we rely on Comcast, we rely on the same internet services you're providing, you're providing what happens during a storm. They go down.
So, so when the internet's down, you have, you lose those communication lines?
So with these, we have, no, we lose communications, you lose telephones, you lose a lot of things. Having a secure fiber network, which is a fiber line, a fixed line that directly goes to each building. The public doesn't use it, no one uses it, it's directly to each building. Um, provides security, it's very stable, we can transfer data back and forth, we can transfer communications, camera networks. Um, it's a very high-capacity line. It's a very high capacity line where I used to return it. You know, it's over one gigabytes per second. Where your, your normal home internet might be 150 megabytes per second. So a lot of communities have stretched fiber throughout their whole town. We, we're not that fortunate. We've had to do, you know, pieces here and there for ourselves. So. So there are, there are just, it, it provides a lot of infrastructure for the future.
Make it very clear. Thank you.
It gives us.
My stupid question, but I'll go for anyways. I hear, is this underground?
No, so fiber.
So whatever, the tree falls in.
That is a good question. That can happen. Okay. What we tend to find, and again, in our radio system that we use, our actual communication system, we use now a combination of fiber and our microwave system. So if one goes down, one can automatically back up and take over with, with modernized tech technology. You will find that the fiber is a very clear and very robust system. They can't fail. Microwave systems fail in weather. Normally what happens when a pole goes down or which will respond to, first of all, you hope it wasn't attached to your fiber. But when they do go down, it's normally not those lines that break. Those, these are, these are lower on the poles. Okay. Not like the utility lines that are up higher. So normally when those things go down, they just go down, the pole bends, they lay on the ground, but it didn't break that fiber. So I think if you looked at some statistics, you would find that it's not that often that happens. But I'm not going to say it can't.
True.
And if the fiber was to go down in South Cover, that doesn't mean the fiber loop doesn't work everywhere else. It's leg dependent. It's not like if it goes down somewhere, the whole fiber is dead. And again, there might be smarter people than me to answer that. The third item for the fire department is some IT upgrades in those same stations. And I keep hopping on those same facilities just because they're outside the center. Our goal would be for $19,000 to purchase what we call a type of smart board or interactive display boards that we can have our Zoom meetings, do our trainings. We could do that more remotely if we had to. We realized that with the pandemic, as you all did. We're trying to balance what firefighters were sick versus what wasn't, where we do remote meetings where we couldn't. You know, we, you have to remember, we have to manage three different fire stations and not just over here. So in order to keep, you know, continuity with them, that is something we would look to do and increase that. We don't have those abilities in those facilities now. So this would be a new facility, a new objective. The fourth one of the fire department would be to improve the HVAC units in both those same stations. Their price tag comes to $45,000. That was provided by Mr. Seidentoff. Those systems are pretty much original to the buildings. Station two is original. It's over 25 years old. Station three was in 2010. However, there was never any air conditioning installed in that facility. So the goal would be to add air conditioning to that facility, keeping the heating unit as is. And that comes to $45,000. Just to switch over to general public safety, I don't want to confuse you. I'll go to the second item. Since we were going to run fiber to the, well, a proposal is to run fiber to the two fire stations. I, I feel it's the best interest that we connect the council of aging to that fiber network also. It's not that long of a run to do that, and I have no discussions with anyone from the council of aging here. So I don't want to, I'm not trying to speak for you at all or your agency. It would just make sense, you know, for about $30,000, whatever that money is, we can continue that run from, it would come from the South Cover Fire Station or a pole out front to that facility. Now, I'm not saying the council agent could use that now, but I'm sure in the future that's where things head. And it allows them to have that technology, hook into the town's network, have some security for files and so forth. So it'd be my recommendation to nix the first item for $169,000 and proceed with the item for $207,000. And that would provide fiber to all the town facility buildings except, I guess I would have to say the North Cover Water District. I mean, I don't know how you want to classify that. I think in my estimation that would provide, and I might be wrong, you might answer for me, you guys, but I think you have it everywhere. So that would give all municipal buildings a fiber connection. And I think that would be a smart move for the future. The last one on the general public safety, you might, might not be aware, but there is a new communications tower being constructed on, in South Cover behind Ocean Spray. We did, through a lot of work, we have permission to put our communication equipment on that tower. This would be a fourth receiving site for all of public safety, including the DPW. We got permission to put that equipment on there as kind of a future type item to see where this went. The tower is up. It is being, it is up now. It's not completed. The goal would be is we're going to use some of the money we have from our communications project to fund some equipment for this tower and try to get it online as soon as we can. South Cover is generally a very tough reception area for public safety. It has been for years. This tower is in a good area where it can improve that. I think, I think this is going to happen quicker than not, and we feel that for $70,000, this would help us buy the equipment and also hire the climbers to install the equipment. Makepeace Company has already purchased us a generator for the site and they have already purchased us a small office, like a shelter that all our equipment goes into. They were very generous with that. And the tower manufacturer or the operator is providing the space. So for $70,000, we feel this benefits multiple departments. And it would take the burden off some funds that we have, that we have other purposes for. So. That's where I am. So those are the items. Technically, there would be three for the fire department and then two for general public safety.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board on any of these items?
So Chief, the last one you mentioned, that was the same as, as Mike had mentioned with EMS. Is that a combination?
Which didn't.
As far as the radio infrastructure.
Yes, when, yes, when Chief Ryan mentioned that, when I would talk about that, that would benefit all departments. So yes, that would be under his thing also. I don't know if he had a price with it there, but that is the actual price.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add?
Nope, good.
I think, all right, Chief, do you have anything, anything else you'd like the board to know about?
I, I would just finally just say, I, I would just say, I think all public safety, and I'll speak for the fire department. If, if there are more important projects to pick, you pick them. Okay? Pandemic or not, your emergency services will be here. And, and you know, these are, these are nice items. I think these improve our infrastructure and I think they're smart thinking items to move forward. But I don't want you to leave here for a second to think, you know, some of these aren't on capital. Lists and stuff like that, you know, because they're, we found a fund, fund. And I think this would be a good reason to fund them, but don't think for a second that we wouldn't be there to support any emergencies that go on. So.
We appreciate that and we.
Okay.
So you're saying the capital list is more of a higher priority for you?
What's that? These are not on.
So the capital list is a, is a higher priority for you.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, definitely. I can't argue that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, Chief Doofly, next up is our police integrated records management system. Welcome back, chief.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So when we were asked to come up with projects for this money, we were in a brand new building. Most of our infrastructure is fine. The only project that's on the horizon is our eventually change to the public record system and the, and the dispatch system, CAD system that Chief Ryan spoke about. We've had the system, it was known as IMC when it started since 2005. It is working. It is like all computer programs reaching its end of life at some point. We met with the vendor today to talk about the replacement, which would be from the original vendor. And was, we're told that while they don't have a date yet for end of life, we will be receiving a notification fairly shortly, maybe not this year, but soon that they will be at a three year end of life. And then that won't be supported any further. So it's an upcoming expense that the town's going to face at some point. Whether that has to be right now with opera money or not, but it's, it's the only thing I could think of for infrastructure that we would need. And the price that we have on there, the $246,000 is the original, is the initial cost. However, with the records management system, the CAD system, there is an ongoing maintenance cost. Currently that cost is about $16,000 this year and that goes up to probably about $17,000 next year, $18,000 after that. And when we got this original quote, the cost, the maintenance cost is considerably larger. So we met with them today to find out, A, what parts do we really need and whether that can be changed. So we don't have an actual good number yet. And we figured we'd start with the number for the current system we have upgrading to the same company. There are other companies out there that we need to look at and see what they would cost before we'd be ready to move forward on it. But it's a project that when I was asked about what we could put on for opera money, that's what I came up with.
All right. Can I ask you, does the, does the management system, does that benefit public safety? Does that?
Yes, this is the system that our dispatchers use to put the information in, dispatch the calls that comes in from nine oh one. And that starts the whole tracking of creating our log and creating our police reports. So it's a computer generated system that does all that.
So can I ask you, what is the difference between if, if we have this system operating than the system we have right now operating? What, how does that?
The, the difference is that the system we have right now, we purchased in 2005.
Okay.
And in the next three to five years, it will be obsolete and not, no end of life and we will be replacing it at some point.
So this, this is an item we're going to have to address.
Yes. This is a project that is coming, that is going to, that is earmarked on our capital plan and is coming. It doesn't have to be done this year. It's not an immediate project, but it's a project that the town is going to face an expense within the next five years.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions from the board on this particular item?
Just a quick question. The spending the money on this system, how much is it worth?
Well, we don't, we have an initial, the initial cost about $246,000 and then an ongoing fee from there. But we met with them today to, to talk about that and discuss what parts of that we actually need or don't need, or whether there's a, we can lower that price at some point. So I don't have an aggregate cost.
So we get 246 was the dispatch software upgrade, but I thought, so that is the.
Yeah, that's, it does the same.
Integrated records.
Yeah, that's the same thing. Yes.
Okay. So you're saying right now that you've got a monthly expense, three thousand?
No, I have a, we have a, so we purchased the product in 2005, it was $250,000. We did $25,000 a year for 10 years. And then after that, we picked up a maintenance contract. When I took over, it started at about 11,000. We're currently, it goes up a little bit every year. We're currently at 16,000. So I just estimate next year will be about 17,000. It continues to grow from there. But the maintenance fee with this new one is considerably larger. So we're working, yes, more. So we're working through that, come up with a better call.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add? Chief, anything else you think we need to know?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is a town hall, IT and technology, something I know that's near and dear to all our hearts because we've discussed this many times. Mr. Fantasy, are you addressing this?
I am. So we had a committee, an IT Wi-Fi type committee meet and look at this, this room basically. And even expand maybe to the other town meeting rooms that we have here, but mostly in here. One of the things that we were looking for is a better Zoom type situation where we don't lose a signal. We don't, we don't have issues with, with having people able to log in or log out from here. And, and we wanted two, two quotes on this. We had a, the quotes by Arcers, which is on the state bid list. They came in, did a review of what we have and what we would need. It would be additional monitor like on this side. So they'd be on each side. On the, on the low quote, which is a subcompact, we'll call it versus an SUV. The low quote is, is 14,000. And we were doing this not thinking in terms only of opera funds, but, but perhaps that if the town were to pay for it. So we wanted to get a range of what, what we would get for the money. But the, in the, you'll see that one, it's very, it's the first one, 14, 306, 75. A couple of TV, well, I think it's one TV or two. Some monitors, some connections, Zoom connections and so forth. The other one, which is the one I'd recommend is the, it's 51,921, 60. And if you look at the second page, it kind of breaks down what, what happened. And basically it would change this room into a smart room with a smart podium that can be, you can utilize the podium to change the, the monitors and what's being put out on Zoom or internally for training purposes for the town's employees and so forth. And one of the other things that we were concerned about the cabling, and you can see, if you walk around here, sometimes the cables are across the floor. They're all in the back here across the floor. This would put a subfloor in and would put the cabling under, under that so that you wouldn't have these wires, which is obviously could be a concern for our insurance company, having those out there like that. It would also give us a better quality when we're dealing with Area 58 on the connections. It, it would, it's kind of a multi-area fix that's much needed here. Bring us up to the, the modern times of, of having, you know, availability on Wi-Fi and other things.
And I think this is something that's been discussed in this room many times.
And, and yeah. And if Steve Mahoney were here, he'd explain it better than I can, but.
In the age of Zoom meetings and, you know, oftentimes we, we need to talk to people that aren't here. We, I think this is a, a long needed.
And this falls right in the categories of, of better broadband and other communications.
The only question I would ask is, does this, the larger quote, the 51,000, does that only take into account this room?
That does.
So it does nothing for the larger room down, down on the first floor?
We were seeking a quote from them for additional capacity down there.
I think we should get that as well.
Yeah, I know.
I think that as well, oftentimes there's meetings up here and meetings going on down there at the same time.
Yeah.
And so that's the only thing I would ask you is to try to get some kind of quote for that downstairs room as well. Are there questions from the board for the town administrator on this?
I, I just have one. Would it, does it include the capacity to directly connect Area 58 to this rather than?
Yes.
It'll make people actually be able to see it at home.
Yes.
On their TV.
And for us and others in here to be able to see better.
Because that's, that's a huge complaint from people at home, I think.
Area 58, Rich Gulart was actually included in that committee, correct?
Yeah, he was.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just think we should, we should look into that, that basement room. And if there's another room that you think as well.
Actually, there are two basement meeting rooms.
That, that's right.
The other one on the right.
That's right. Anything else from the board on this particular item?
No, you stole my question.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, hey.
All right, Mr. Fantasy, thank you.
Quick question.
Yep.
All the equipment here that I guess Area 58 broadcasts on, is that our equipment or their equipment?
Their equipment.
Okay. So it's not, nothing, nothing is included in this that upgrades or doesn't need to be.
No, other than the connections.
And then same question is that whatever we spend out of this, does this reduce the townwide technology budget on capital outlet?
It would. So it's got a win-win.
And I guess as far as Mr. Carter's question as well, I think the, the most recent contract we signed with Comcast included an upgrade to our HD.
Yep, for, for Area 58.
Right. So that would work with that as well. All right. Is there anything else on this particular item? All right. Moving right along. The last one we have is the council on aging restructuring of refrigerator, freezer and generator support systems.
This will be short and sweet.
Doesn't matter. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for your consideration. I know the opera funds were dedicated to vital public services. And I want to consider the fact that providing food service to the seniors of the community is a vital public service. And what the proposal I'm offering here is to upgrade our freezers and refrigeration for the food that we store in the COA. Currently we're working with a variety of up to 10 different freezers. Currently, we're working with a variety of up to ten different freezers of various ages and capacities. Um, a lot of them are hand-me-downs, actually residential hand-me-downs. A few seniors have, um, noted with pride that they had donated their refrigerators and freezers to us like over decades ago. So when I see, um, harvest gold and avocado green, I, I know it came from a former century. So, uh, we're dealing with some of that. We also have situations where a freezer door is being held closed by a cinder block. You know, seals on the freezers are not secure. Um, June is chipping away, you know, with like an ice pick to get at some of the aspects of these freezers. So, um, we've dealt with it for a while. The other aspect that I'm concerned with from safety, certainly food safety is the highest, you know, criteria that I'm, I'm talking about. But, uh, staff safety as well. They are located in multiple areas of the COA. Um, and, uh, there's the largest commercial one is outside in an outbuilding, um, which has to be accessed through a set of stairs in weather that we're like, we're currently experiencing with ice and snow. Um, June, who's the head cook, is often in the darkness of the morning, um, getting food and, you know, going up the stairs. Sometimes the area is cleared, sometimes it isn't. Um, some of the older, uh, freezers are actually in a, um, part of the building that is like an unfinished basement area of the COA is only accessible from the outside. And that area has not even a walkway to it, and she's also in the weather, rain, snow, whatever, going there and carrying the food into the building. Uh, there are a couple, again, they're all over this. We're probably talking about ten different freezers that, um, are throughout the building. And there's some in the basement in, in the interior of the building. And only, I think, one or two that are actually on the level of the, uh, main floor where the head cook is actually, you know, accessing food for preparing the meals. So part of the proposal, um, Dave Sedentoff came out with some measurements to see part of our limitation is the fact that it is, uh, um, an old home, um, and the space is limited, access is limited. A lot of the commercial, uh, refrigerator or freezers would not fit into the building and that, which is why we have the, uh, one outside. Um, so the proposal is actually for residential units, but, uh, several of them. So we're looking at, um, there were five, uh, upright freezers that are in the proposal that were measured to fit within the building itself internally. Uh, and, uh, a refrigerator, uh, also that would hopefully, the goal would be to get two freezers and, uh, one refrigerator in the pantry, which is on the main level where the, the head cook is preparing her food. Um, and then the other units would be in the basement area also, um, so where she wouldn't have to go outside. Main, the, the one that's outside, the commercial freezer, uh, would still maintain perhaps the deliveries that are made during the day that has the greater capacity and has the access for deliveries to be made directly to it. But what would it allow for is from a staff, uh, standpoint, is that June could take, um, the deliveries during the day directly into the, um, freezer that's outside, would have the capacity to have, um, additional staff or, or somebody be able to assist her to bring food in to maintain inside the building. So when it's, uh, her morning, when she comes in as early as she does, she would be able to go, uh, to the freezers and refrigerator that are in the building, uh, regardless of the weather and be in a safe situation with that. I also think that, um, the food safety aspect would be that we would hopefully have like, you know, well-running, uh, secure, uh, freezers that would be, and we're talking about, uh, there's additional figure in there for adding, making sure that they're all added on to the generator that we currently have for the food safety aspect. And, um, just with the ability to have a greater capacity, because right now with the older models, there's a great amount of frost that builds up. So she's very, even it might be a greater or at a decent size, uh, cubic capacity. The, they, they need defrosting on a constant basis. So we're losing the, the internal space that she could to serve, to store her food. So I think, um, the higher efficiency will save on costs as well. I just know that freezers that are running with a lot of frost on them and certainly ones that are well over, you know, twenty, thirty years old have to be costing much more to run. The electricity itself must be, you know, a, a big difference if we get, go with the high efficiency. So the overall goal is to, you know, safety all around and just, you know, cost effectiveness is the, the bottom line there. Any, any questions?
Uh, any questions from the board on this particular item? I think it's pretty clear.
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully, like I said, it's, it's been, you know, realizing that they've been there for a while, it, you know, clearly is, is something that's probably over, overdue to, to be done.
I think you're, I think you're right. Um, any, any questions from anyone on this, Mr. Fantasy?
Yeah, so right now there's nine freezers in there. And when Dave and I went down there, you literally have to chip away to get the food out. And there's freezer burn, it's just, and when this, this, this proposal, according to the commissioners from Plymouth County, they considered a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Six thousand dollars plus, it's above five thousand dollars to rewire for the generator to add on. So, so it's an eleven thousand dollar project, so. And they'd need to be replaced anyway at this point, so.
Seems, seems to me that's a no-brainer. Yeah, I would agree with the commissioners.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr.?
Probably had a question, yeah.
So this will replace all but that one outside freezer you'd still keep?
That's, that's the go, yes. And that would also eliminate, um, the access to that, um, because there's really no reason otherwise to go to that, um, that what's affectionately known as the spider room. Um, that is the unfinished sort of basement area that's in the back building. So that would, that would keep, I said, the safety aspect for the staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that completes our proposals for the evening. Uh, I asked Mr. Fantasy to include, um, this next item, a select board ARPA discussions, because I wanted to sort of put a plan together, uh, for the board on, on the ARPA proposals. And I also wanted to give the board an opportunity to make any proposals they might have that perhaps they didn't see on here. So I guess, um, just as, as a start, uh, Mr. Fantasy, could I ask you to put together a, a schedule of what proposals do and do not need town meeting approval for the board? Just so we, so we know what, what, what we, what we do need to send to town meeting.
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, she was asking me a question, but I didn't hear what you were saying.
Okay, I just asked you, could you put together for the board a schedule of what proposals do and do not need to go to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, just for the future. So as we move forward, I think that would be important to know. Um, and I guess as far as the members of the board, um, what would you feel? Do you, would you like to have a separate meeting to discuss and vote on ARPA proposals? Or would you like to just include it as an agenda item in a already scheduled meeting? What's the sense of the board?
We can probably put it as an agenda item to at least start the discussion. If it goes long, we can continue it, but.
I think it's probably gonna go long.
Yeah, but I think we can start to address some of it.
Any, anyone else?
I, I would just say either one specific meeting for this, or if you're gonna have it with other items, it's just not a bunch of other items, one or two other items.
Yeah, I, I, I tend to think we may need a, 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 a separate meeting, just because I think it's gonna be a long item.
I'd, I'd go for a separate meeting. I think that's, we have a lot of submittals here and a lot of money to deal with. I, I, I wouldn't want to fail rush, like we have a, if we have more agenda items that we want to rush through this, I think.
What else?
I think it could be its own.
That's right. And it may be that the board has additional questions on one item or another and has to ask somebody to, to, to come back. I don't know. So, um, we aim for sometime mid-February, uh, Mr. Fantasy, do you think that gives us enough time to?
Does.
To deal, okay, so.
Can I just, um, just if somebody else, if you do come up with some project yourself that you want to throw by me, it's not too late to get that into the mix. Um, or if you have any questions on any of these that you want to give me a call and I can get those answers. Uh, well, hopefully by then we'll have all the prices too and, and the lists, you know, of what requires town meeting and so forth.
Well, that was next on my list. So can you, for any items that don't have dollar values attached to them, can you get back to that particular board and?
We will.
It's really imperative that they try to get us, I think, numbers.
There's only a few, a few missing there.
Right.
So, yep.
Right. Um, and what we can do, you can send out a couple of dates to the board and we'll come. I think it's important that we obviously have a meeting where all five members can attend. So we'll, we'll put that, that out there. Um, and, uh, just for myself, a, as far as items, I really would like to see us spend some more money on the Council on Aging. I, I really think that there's a lot of needs down there and, and this is money, this is a, a chance for us to address some of those. So, Mr. Fantasy, I could ask you to get together with Ms. Kelly and just see if there's a, a few more items down there that we can, we can work on. I really think that, I really think that we should be trying to target the Council on Aging as an opportunity for some of these ARPA funds. I, 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 I feel pretty strongly about that, so. Um, and just one quick question for you. So the, the money that you identified when we first opened the meeting that's coming back to the town uh, from the North Carver Water District, that technically, that money does not have to be spent on an ARPA-specific project, right?
No, that could be used at this point because it's coming back just as, as clean money.
So one thing I would, I would suggest.
But it was ARPA money.
Oh, I, I, I understand. I understand. Just one thing I would, I would suggest that I think this board should be, should be thinking about. There's a number of proposals coming from town meeting. There's, there's, we have the Council on Aging, we have pickleball that I know was taken off this particular item, but it's a, it's a big project down there, a big dollar project. We have, I believe, the Conservation Commission that has a number of things planned for that town-owned property adjacent to the Council on Aging. But I don't think we've ever seen a plan for that entire property. And I think it's important that we take some money, perhaps we could identify some money from that, that money coming back to the North Carver Water District and have, have somebody engineer a plan for that entire area. And my, my concern is that we're spending money on a lot of projects down there, a lot of good projects. But what I would hate to see is us do some projects and three or four years from now find out that because we put something ten feet too far, one way or the other, that we have to, we have to dig it up because we, we didn't plan that. So I, I think before we start spending a lot of money down there, I think it's important that we have an overall plan for the entire, entire property. And I, I, I would just suggest that perhaps the board consider at, when we come back to, to talk about this, and perhaps you could reach out to the appropriate people and get a couple of prices. But I just think it would be a, a good idea for us to have an overall plan for that entire property before we start spending a lot of, a lot of money down there and perhaps find out if a couple of years from now we, we just will put something in the wrong place, that's all. So, uh, with that, I'd open it up to, to the board. Does anybody have?
I, I actually have a proposal. I don't have figures with it. And I have two things. The first one's a moot point, but I made a promise to a little girl that I'd present it. So here's the moot point and here's that one.
Thank you.
Here's some moot. There you go. All right, you two can have my last two copies. Okay, so.
I'll work at this one.
I think you can probably tell which one is off the table at this point. But, um, I always discuss what I do here with my girls. And when I was telling them what I was doing tonight, when I mentioned the pickleball court and down there, they said, "Well, Mom, I don't think I can play pickleball, so what else can I do down there? Well, you and Dad figure out what it is." Um, so one thing they said was a playground, but then my youngest daughter in kindergarten, who's gonna graduate from that old school, um, asked if she could propose tetherball as something to go down there. So as you'll see, she, uh, has a pretty good plan of what it would look like, showing that people can participate and watch. So knowing that, that, uh, it's not on the table, I had promised her I would present it. So I will go back to her and tell her, "I'm glad you did it, but not everything gets done." So, but I had to do that for you guys. Can someone just hold it up to show them for a chuckle?
Absolutely. Can, area fifty-eight, can you get a shot of that?
So, um, but then the, the more legitimate one is the proposed bike route through town. I finally brought in a map, so, and I wrote a little bit to help me remember. So not only did COVID affect people's health from like a viral standpoint, but it also negatively affected our physical and mental health. And when COVID basically shut down the world, it shut down gyms, trampoline parks, shopping mall walking clubs, indoor play spaces and just on and on and on. And we lost so many places and chances to be physical and to exercise, and we couldn't do anything indoors. So what did we do? We looked outdoors. More specifically, we rode bikes. Um, it's like riding a bike. It's never been true. Bicycle sales soared, stores were sold out, online was sold out, bicycle manufacturers were sold out. And if you were able to find one, it was like striking gold. Why? Because bicycling is something you can do outside and in a socially distanced manner. It doesn't discriminate. Anyone from three to a hundred and three can ride a bike. You can ride it by yourself, or you could ride with friends and family, which made getting through the pandemic easy because it was a safe way to socialize. Um, bicycling really became healthy for our physical and mental health. Carver has long acknowledged the importance of bicycling. In the twenty-ten Open Space and Recreation Survey, the results listed bike paths and trails as the second highest recreational facility need, second only to permanently protected open space with public access. Um, the town's current master plan also recognizes the need and desire for better biking opportunities in town. Um, the twenty-seventeen master plan listed a complete townwide bicycle and pedestrian plan as an important recreation and mobility goal. Uh, Carver is in the process of updating its open space and recreation plan now. And once again, the need for bicycling facilities is near or at the top of the list. I don't have the stats with me, but it's still up there. It hasn't gone away. About a decade ago, I'm pretty sure you guys have heard me talk about it, the Carver had a bike path advisory committee with the goal of identifying, creating and constructing bicycle opportunities in town. And the committee worked tirelessly for years and collaborated with groups like SERPED before it was disbanded due to an absence of funding. So prior work that Carver has done has identified the benefit that more bicycling opportunities would bring to the town, recreationally and economically, because as a method of transportation, it can help local businesses. "Hey, I want to go get ice cream. Let me ride there." "Hey, I want to go to the center of town. I can ride there. I feel safe." So the emergence of COVID just helped us realize how valuable it can be. Um, it's not just fun. It's healthy, it's valuable. And, uh, the ARPA funds, I think, can help us start to construct the bike path that we designed years ago, that you have a copy of in front of you. Sorry, some of the street names are cut off on the left. Um, starting small is the way that we get on the state's tip or Transportation Improvement Program, which would help us toward our goal of the complete townwide bicycling network. So I am proposing that the town use some of its ARPA funds to place directional signs and safety charrows along the bike route, which starts from south to north on Cranberry Road in South Carver. It meanders along beautifully scenic residential roads in West Carver and then ends up at the Plimpton Town Line on Brook Street in North Carver. And this bike route, um, came from a prior open space and recreation plan and with the work of SERPED. That was the, the start of it. The directional signs aid bicyclists in following the route. And they label it with something specific, like if you do Route One, that'll help the cyclists follow where you go. And along the way, you can have points of interest signs. "Hey, if you were to turn right here, you'd go to the high school," or "Turn left here, you'd go here." I have a copy of all of the, I didn't make copies for everyone, but I have all the intersections with the type of signs we'd need. Um, again, Bike Path Committee did a lot of work. The charrows are pavement markings that improve cycl- The charrows are pavement markings that improve cycling safety on streets that are too narrow for a traditional bike lane. So they put, you put the share on the road and it alerts motorists to the increased presence of cyclists on that road. And it tells bicyclists too, that this is a shared lane environment. So I think using the funds to begin a physical construction of the bike route is invaluable as a response and forward-thinking answer to public health needs by providing a safer way for people to exercise, improving physical and mental health. And it does address nec- uh, negative economic impacts by encouraging people to bike to the local businesses. So if I get like kind of head nods or something, I will work with, with Bob and, and maybe Dave to come up with some real world financial estimates on the signs and charrows. But Plymouth did put forth a playground in their ARPA funds and they designated it as, they checked the box that said provision of government services under the revenue replacement category. And looking at the, the big categories from the ARPA website, I think it could fit into negative economic impacts, aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. So I know they were a little bit like, mm, we don't love pickleball. I think Bike Path has a, has a good chance, so.
I, I think this is certainly something for the board to consider. And is, is this something, Mr. Fennessey, that you can work with whoever we need to work with? But first of all, find out if it's, if it's an acceptable program for the Plymouth County Commissioners.
Yeah.
And if it is.
And unlike pickleball, this may have a better shot at that because it's something that's already in, hadn't started and stopped. Where pickleball, one of the, one of the things that the commissioners said that, you know, it's, it's putting in something new that you didn't have before. Well, this we had started, so, so this might have a better shot at getting the approval.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, again, we're not voting on anything tonight. But I think it's certainly worth, let's find out whether, first of all, whether it's doable. And let's find out what the, what the numbers are.
I don't see any thumbs downs, so that's promising.
No.
You might be hiding them under the desk, but uh, I'm not seeing any like tongues sticking out, so.
Just a question, I, I, I think it's a great idea. Um, but are we talking both signage? And I'm assuming on any of the streets, you'd have a bike path lane marked. Is there anything in here that's, that would be going over like a dirt path that you'd have to pave in the bike path?
That is so a long-term goal. That, back when the Bike Path Committee was still around and that was discussed because there was no budget, SERPED had said back then that an off-road shared bike lane was like a million dollars a mile. And you can't really do that without getting on that tip. But the better, Massachusetts won't put you on that if the town hasn't shown that there's support behind it. So starting like this is the way to show them, kind of like the commissioners, like we're, we're interested in it. We can do this, we want to do more. And then for the charrows, um, they had been in South Carver and they got paved over and not repainted. But to show you, so this is what one looks like. So it's a sharing the lane, it's telling the cars, watch out, there's going to be cyclists there.
Gotcha.
Just for a little bit more.
Yeah, that's what I'm used to saying, yeah.
Yeah, see, we don't have roads that way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, maybe, maybe you could get that to Mr. Fennessey and he can bring it out to the, to the board.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but I, I think that's, it's certainly a proposal worth, worth exploring.
Yay.
All right, anything else?
No.
Anyone else?
I got a, I'm sorry. Um, something that Mr. Bogdan brought up around the meeting, the old police station, fire station. Could we use funds for that at all, such as demoing them for future development? Is that something that's an allowable use?
I'd have to check on that. It might be a stretch.
We're also using that to store things like the GATR buses and things right now, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I, but again, we can, we can look into it.
I mean, is that something you want me to look into?
I, I'm just curious if it's an allowable use, you know? Yeah, but if it's a quick call, never mind coming up with estimates, I'd just like.
Sure, like, like the chairman said, we're short of space. Or other things too, there's other things stored in there too, so.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
Actually, that was one of the things I was going to ask about as well, because I know we've talked before about either a rec center or, or for this, for the seniors, for events, that we have that, the building right there now, so. Again, it might take more than what we have in ARPA funds, but I thought at least we could maybe take a look at that or.
To renovate?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're going to bring everything up to code, obviously.
Right.
And um, Dave's here, he could probably tell you how much that's going to cost. The infrastructure there is bad. It's, it's lived its life, so to speak, so. Sometimes it's cheaper to, to demo, demolish it and build fresh, yeah, but.
And, and the other question I had, I know originally when we heard about ARPA funds, I had brought up, and I think we had discussed a little bit, was the high school auditorium, um, as far as if we have meetings. So let's say we have a, a public hearing and we know that's going to be larger. We're looking for a larger spot and we'd always said, let's go to the auditorium. So try to upgrade the, the uh, the AV there and the technology. And I know that's probably goes into the high school budget type thing, but I don't know if that's something we could separately do or look into, but um, I, I think especially fairly soon, we're going to have some public hearings or meetings that we might need larger rooms at. I like to have that option and I think that's, I would believe.
I don't want to catch, catch you too off guard, but uh, do you feel comfortable talking about that a little bit? Or would you prefer, prefer that we come back at another, another night and discuss it? If you could just step up to the microphone, Mr. Seatonoff.
It's uh, projects that have already been approved.
Yep, um, so currently at the high school, there is a lighting project that's going on, which really doesn't contain as much, but it'll tie in a little bit. Um, so they are putting all new lighting, we're retrofitting, bringing the stage lighting for performances um, up to a, something that's current. Um, what we had in there is original from 1987. Um, part of that, what we're doing is on the upper tier of the auditorium, when you're looking from the stage back, on the right-hand side behind the tiered seating, there was a storage room there. We've transformed that, we opened up the wall um, during Christmas and that is now going to be an AV room. Um, so as you are familiar, when you walk into town meeting, our whole soundboard was set up right there. That is all going to be moved back into that AV room now. Um, we have made some upgrades to the speakers. Um, we have installed LED lighting. Um, it was kind of a retrofit, um, from what the existing is, so we have made some improvements there. Um, that, I think the sound system, moving that up into that space is going to be an improvement with the speakers that are in there now. Um, so I don't know what.
I was just going to say, I think that in, we're going to have improved sound, uh, we're going to have improved stage lighting. Uh, now obviously, uh, you're not doing performances in there. I don't think, I don't think it's going to do a drama production, uh, but this, you know, obviously that whole new system is going to be upgraded. Um, so I think you're going to see improvements. I don't know what type, what, what other type of AV, AV improvements?
Well, I think the other thing that people always, that I hear complaints of, especially town meeting, that people at home can't hear it, you know, they can't hear what's going on if you're not into the mic or just the whole, I don't know what the technical term is, people at home trying to hear what's going on at the town meeting.
We've made a few improvements. We've gone to, over the years, we've gone to this type of mic, which is called a proximity mic, which picks up better versus the microphones people would actually have to basically almost put their lips on for it to be heard. Um, Area 58 picks up the feed out of our soundboard is an input. The microphones are an input into our soundboard and they take an output and it's broadcast into their um, AV. So that would be more of a Navy question. I don't have the expertise to, to answer, but it's something we could explore, certainly.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Hoffman?
So how about Wi-Fi? Has, has that been improved at all in the school?
Wi-Fi in the school is fine. That's, that really shouldn't be an issue, so I don't know if, that, that should not be an issue. So maybe it's just working with tech and making sure that, uh, what's happened in that building is we control where Wi-Fi is turned on and we can push Wi-Fi to certain areas of the building, which is our choice. Uh, so if town, so the Wi-Fi in there is not an issue. I guess we don't need any upgrades to Wi-Fi in the auditorium.
I think it would just.
It's just opening up the access and the bandwidth in that area and making sure people can access the guest network.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
So it's really the, the guest, the guest work, guest network needs to be turned on. Everybody has to have access to the password to the guest network. But it is, it's not a, it's not a uh, infrastructure issue. It's not a, it's not an infrastructure or a bandwidth issue in terms of Wi-Fi in the auditorium.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Ms. Hewens? All right. Um, so I, I just think, um, I will get with Mr. Fennessey, we'll, we'll send out a couple of proposed dates for a meeting. But I think it's probably incumbent upon us, obviously we have some numbers we have to follow up with. But I think it probably makes sense to have that meeting sooner rather than later in case we have any further questions or obviously there may be some people that need, need answers from the board, so.
Mr. Townsend, um, I'm seeing a hand in the audience. Would it be possible for Habitat representative to come back?
Just, just to clarify, I have a quick, very quick piece of information in answer to your question.
So um, just very quickly, uh, you had asked about local preference, you had as well. Um, and while I've been sitting in this seat, I just did confirm on DHCD's website that um, they, they max out, they do not allow more than 70% of any project's um, affordable housing units to be uh, local preference designated. So in this case, we're talking about three homes, so no more than two of those three could carry a local preference. It's a 70% ceiling that DHCD applies. And just to clarify, Sarah, you had asked about whether they sort of, their attitude towards those types of applications. And I answered sort of anecdotally, it's actually kind of baked into their policy that um, the application has to demonstrate um, the, the need for a local preference. And I think that can be done with data, you know, showing income levels as it relates to Carver compared to regionally. So it's a demonstration as well as a ceiling cap. Thank you.
I appreciate you getting back to us with that information so quickly.
Um, could I just ask her one quick question?
Absolutely.
Thank you, so um, I don't know if you saw this, if it was on the website too, but if we had two of them as local preference for Carver residents, could the other one be a preference for veterans?
No.
Okay.
No, that I know they don't do.
Okay, so.
We had a three-home build down in um, in Plymouth, um, not too long ago, we completed it. And that doubling up, I was referencing it before, I know was not approved.
Okay, so you'd have to have one for Carver residents, one for vets and then one just?
Oh, no, in general, a whole project can only have one preference category.
Ah, okay.
So it would be, if you chose to go that route, if you wanted to have local preference, then the, the maximum number that you can apply for in this case would be two, um, with uh, statements to demonstrate the need. And then DHCD, it's my understanding, would decide whether or not they would approve one or two.
Great, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
What if there's only one house? That's 100%, can you not designate it?
You can't designate it.
Wow.
Okay, and I have a question too, sorry.
Yeah, sure.
So with the local preference, does DHCD have to approve the local preference? So that, we, we can't just say there will be a local preference? DHCD has to approve that?
Yeah, there's a review period in general. I don't, I don't, I haven't heard, I've asked Jim, I'm 24 days into this seat, so I'd have to ask my predecessor if, I don't believe in our history, they've ever not approved a, an application, but it is reviewed and it is for them to um, approve.
And we probably wouldn't, obviously we would have to vote the project before we could apply for the local.
Oh, you absolutely have to vote the project, yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
And the, it's a, it's a lengthy review process through DHCD, so it's not, it's not a quick turnaround with them.
Okay, so I, just hang, hang on one more question. So Mr. Fennessey, I guess, my question is if the board wanted to, could the board make that project continued upon DHCD approving a local preference?
Yes.
It could. So, so if, if we voted to, to, to do that with the contingency that, that we have a local preference and ultimately DHCD said, no, sorry, we don't approve the local preference and that project would become null and void?
Hmm.
We could look into that?
Yeah, let me look into that, um.
Because we might have to go through that RFP, we might have to show.
Because the RFP will have it unless it is.
Yeah, I think we might have to show site control and pretty certain we have to show site control in order to submit the application to the, at least some level of site control, um, before we can submit the application. So we will have had to gone through the RFP process and so forth.
Yeah.
But I believe you can rescind an application, so yeah, we can look into it.
Okay, I don't want to make you jump back and forth anymore. Mr. Carter?
Um, you talked about building a, I think it was a three-bedroom, two-bath home.
That's our typical model, it doesn't have to be, but that's our, that's what we've done in the past. But we've started to explore smaller footprint homes as well.
What's a typical square footage?
Oh, that's a question that I never got the answer to.
You can get back to us.
I'm going to have to get back to you, I don't want to mistake it.
Send us an email.
Sorry. It's not, it's, all Habitat homes are modest. They're modest homes.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I think you're good now.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the board on uh, on ARPA? Mr. Hoffman?
There's a few items that were on the bottom of the sheet we were given, is there any, is that, are we supposed to discuss those or?
Uh, so those were just um, thoughts of, if you want to talk about them briefly, uh, some of the thoughts were, the first one was COA, the HVAC. And we um, received a $30,000 grant from the Commonwealth and we're going to utilize that grant to uh, replace the splits. We're going to put split heating and air conditioning units at the, at the COA. So that's kind of off the table. The $1 million in the library is the, that's where we're going to go out to bond, is a million dollars. So if there was a lot of money left over in ARPA and we wanted to utilize it, that we could perhaps use that for the library HVAC, because that qualifies. And what was the middle?
Middleborough Water Tie-In.
Oh, and that's a tie-in to the, we're, we're going to put in a, a meter in a pit where Middleborough comes in with the water to Carver. And in that location, we've met with the um, with the Middleborough people. And we're, that's what, you remember signing a memorandum of agreement that KP Law can handle both sides of that agreement. So that's in the works, that, you know, that's another uh, option of being used with ARPA money.
Could that water, that money also come out of the North Carver Water District's funds?
It could, yep, yep. So, so that, that was just like my notes on the bottom, so.
Wasn't there an accounting system too on there or something or?
Pardon me?
Accounting software update.
Accounting software?
Oh, yeah.
For 126.
I'm sorry, that's the, the other one. Yeah, the count, and you, you may want to talk about that a little bit.
That goes on the same.
You gotta pull it in.
Goes on the same um, lines as the Police Chief software. They're not doing any more upgrades to it, so we either need to convert to their new um, platform or go to some other software company. So we've been looking at um, different platforms and different demos to see if we want to stay where, with who we're at. But that's basically what's the cost to switch over to the new platform or to somebody else.
Is that accounting and assessing?
Counting, assessing, utility billing.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Fennessey, anything else?
No.
Good. All right. Nothing else on the board on ARPA? All right. Uh, select board community announcements. Mr. Hoffman?
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Hewens?
I have nothing at this time.
Oh, Mr. Hoffman? I'm sorry, Mr. Carter?
Nothing at this time either.
Same.
Nor do I. Thank you, everybody, have a great night. Our next meeting will be on uh, January 28th, 23th. And I think technically that's just, that's our budget hearings, correct, Mr.?
Yes, that's on Saturday.
All right. Thank you, everybody, have a great night. Thank you, Area 58.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, correct. Motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.